Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for October 16th, 15th, 2016. I forgot to put my glasses on. This is our meeting where you're not going to, we're not going to take any votes tonight as a committee of the whole. What we're going to have is probably a lot of discussion on matters that have come to the Board either through our study session or some other presentation. We're not going to have a regular meeting for two weeks, so items that are on the agenda for tonight, if the Board agrees are ready to go to a vote, will be brought to be voted on at our October 29th meeting. So with that, we'll begin. Audience communications, I do not have any blue slips, so we'll move on to item two, Committee of the Whole. I do not have any items. Are there any items, Mrs. Oakley?
We do not, President Johnson, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our Finance Committee and our Chair, Mrs. Battlefield.
Thank you, President Johnson. We have one item tonight on Finance Committee, and that is our financial update, and Mrs. Smith will assist, and I believe she has quite a few helpers with her tonight.
I believe for folks in the audience, we are going to have it on the screen, but it is also on the large screen, so if anyone would prefer to be seated in this area, you may be able to see a little bit better.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Allison.
We'll start tonight with a financial update of our 2018, our 2017-18 year, and take a look at how that's going to impact our 2018-19 school year. With me shortly, I'll be joined by Lisa Vargo and Tom Marchese from Plant Moran, who will be going over our financial statements for the 2017-18 school year. So to begin, first, we'll take a look back at the 2017-18 school year, and I'd like to show you our budget to actual. The final budget amendment had a 99% accuracy rate in both the revenue and expenditures. In our final budget amendment, we anticipated revenue of $155.3 million, and our actual revenue ended up being $156.8 million, or $1.5 million to the good. On the expenditure side, we anticipated our expenditures to be $152.1 million, and they came in at $151 million, and that means it was $1.1 million to the good. Below, I'll go through a breakdown of what categories those differences came in. In the local revenue, we came in about $300,000 less than what we anticipated. The state revenue, about $200,000 less, and then on the other sources, about $2 million to the good, and this is stemming from a reimbursement we received from Wayne Risa. They reimburse us for our special education, least restrictive environment paraprofessionals, and so that's what that large variance is, something that we'll be able to adjust going forward for next year. On the expenditure side, expenditures came in about $600,000 less than what we budgeted, purchased services about $200,000 less, supplies $200,000 less, and others about $100,000. And I'll break down for you on the next slide what's included in each one of those categories. On the revenue side, in the local category is things such as property taxes, fees for programs such as SAC, preschool, and earnings on investments. In our state's revenue, there's unrestricted revenue such as our foundation allowance, as well as restricted grants such as the Section 31A at-risk funds and our Section 107 Adult Ed grant. In the other category, there's reimbursements from Rain Risa. We received two this year, one for our least restrictive environment paraprofessionals or independence aides. The other was in the form of the special education transportation payment. That was about $750,000 we received to help us offset the costs of transporting our special needs students. That's something that we've built into the budget for the 18-19 school year, as this is a payment we've now gotten for the last couple of years. In this other category is also tuition from other public schools. For instance, we run the Livonia Transition Program, and we have students from outside of the district that participate in that program and then pay the district tuition to attend the program. Also in this category would be incoming transfers from other funds, such as indirect costs that we are able to collect from our special education fund, and then sale of property is also included in the other category. On the expenditure side, the differences are broken down. The first category in salary and benefits, so this is all of our compensation to our employees, as well as the benefits such as FICA, retirement, health insurance, dental, vision, life, and long-term disability. Next category is purchased services, and this covers a wide variety of things. These are all of our non-payroll services, such as sub-teachers, paras, drivers, also legal services, transportation services, telephone, mail and postage, water, garbage collection, property insurance, repairs, software maintenance and, software maintenance agreements. In the supplies category, we have teaching and testing materials, textbooks, gas, electric, electricity, vehicle repair parts, office supplies. And then in that final category of other is our capital outlays such as equipment and vehicles. You also, we budget for taxes that are written off, as well as transfers to other funds. So I can stop there if anybody has any questions.
Mrs. Burton.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, if I remember correctly, we have the purchase of one or two vehicles that we made that commitment during the last school year, but we did not actually pay for them until after July 1st.
Correct.
So that would have, I assume artificially increased our, or rather decreased our expenditures by that amount of money.
That's correct, and we'll actually see that on the, one of the future slides, so we can see exactly how much of our fund balance is already earmarked for purchases that the Board's approved.
Okay, so that would have been, that would have brought down the expenditures, obviously, how they would have looked for last year.
Yep.
Okay, so in essence, adding to the fund balance that amount of money when really that's already designated for purchase this year.
Correct.
Okay.
And so what we've done, not only in our budget, we've marked that as committed, we've also reflected that in our financial statements, so any readers of our financial statements will be able to, at a glance, know that part of that fund balance is committed for future purchases that have been approved by the Board.
Okay, and then a couple other quick questions for you. Regarding Wayne Risa, the revenue that's coming into the district, the $750,000 in transportation, we've received that for the last few years, but we've not been able to know from Wayne Risa prior to our budget that it's coming with certainty. And with that large amount, large dollar amount, we've not wanted to budget for it until we knew for sure it's coming.
Correct.
You're saying so it's not right at this point, so it wasn't budgeted last year, so it's, again, it's additional revenue, which it wasn't, that $750,000 was not additional revenue because we guessed wrong.
Yes.
But it's because we wanted to be conservative, because we didn't know for sure whether or not we were going to receive it.
And halfway through the school year last year is when we were notified by Wayne Risa that they would be giving this payment once again. If I recall correctly, this school year was the third year that we received that payment, and Wayne Risa continues to refer to it as a one-time payment, and they have not told us that we'll be getting it in 2018-19, but we've taken a look at the budget for Wayne Risa, and their fund balance in the special education fund is very healthy. They're sitting at, you know, 100% fund balance. So we anticipate that they're, again, going to want to help districts out with offsetting these transportation costs, so we anticipate that payment coming. In the event that Wayne Risa does not approve that, if their Board doesn't approve that though, during a budget amendment, I'll have to then come to you and let you know that that won't be coming. But for now, because again, this is something we've seen for the last couple of years, we did want to include that in the budget, as we do have a, you know, a good feeling that we'll be getting that this school year.
Right, a reasonable certainty that it's going to happen again this year.
Yes.
Okay.
For the 18-19 budget, it'll be the first time we've included it in the proposed budget.
Right.
As opposed to include it in a budget amendment.
Right.
So it is in this year's budget.
Okay, but for last year, still it counts as revenue that we were not counting on because we just weren't certain of it.
Right.
Okay, and then as far as the least restrictive environment paraprofessionals money, approximately how much were we talking about with that?
That is just north of $2.5 million. My, if I recall, I guess about $2.8 million is what the district pays for these least restrictive environment parapros, and we received reimbursement from Wayne Risa, and it amounted to about $2 million this year, and the rest of the funding comes from the state. Every year, we submit a final cost report of all of our special education costs, and the state reimburses us about 28% of our special education costs, and then that flows to us through our state aid payment. And so those costs were included on this year's 4096 report, that's the name of it, and so we will be getting reimbursement for that remainder from the state. So the county, when they're recognizing how much money they're going to reimburse the districts, they account for the revenue that we'll be getting from the state, and they back that out of their payment.
Okay, so now was this, was this then, the 2.5 collectively, was that, that was not money that we had budgeted for?
This was money that we budgeted for during the first budget amendment.
Okay.
17-18 was the first school year that we included these costs in our general fund. Previously, they had been accounted for in the center program, Special Education Fund, and in looking at the 1022 accounting manual from the state, it appeared to be more appropriately placed into the general fund, so it was a transfer over expenditures as well as of revenue.
Okay, okay, again, so again, this was not money that we did not plan appropriately for, but this is rather something that is, that had come out of a different fund.
Previously.
Previously, and it's coming out of this fund now.
Yep.
Okay, great.
And this was something too that, you know, we felt comfortable bringing it to the Board as opposed to waiting for another proposed budget. We wanted to get it in in this last year's cycle, so that's why we brought it to you during the first budget amendment.
Okay, and my last question is the sale of property. We anticipated the funds for the sale of the clay property during the last school year, prior to June 30th, and am I remembering correctly that we actually wound up closing after July 1st?
We did.
Okay.
We were able to recognize some, some revenue from the sale of property in 17-18, but before we brought our final budget amendment to the Board in June, we did have additional information, and we knew that it was most likely not going to close before June 30th, so we did adjust our revenue for the sale of property during our final budget amendment in June.
Okay.
So that would be reflected in this particular update?
Right.
That was already reflected in June?
It was already reflected, okay.
Because we knew at that point in time we would not be closing by June 30th.
Got it, so the others were...
So that's already been reflected.
Right.
And so that revenue too was reflected in our 18-19 proposed budget.
Proposed, okay, but the others were not in the proposed?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much, I appreciate your help.
Yes, my pleasure.
Questions?
With that, I'll move on. Now we'll look forward to seeing how we closed out the 17-18 school year, and we'll take a look at how that's going to impact our 18-19 school year. So keeping everything else constant, we want to take a look at the positive impact ending the 2017-18 year favorably we'll have on our 2018-19 budget. So the first column in blue is our final amended budget. We anticipated an ending fund balance of $19.9 million, or 12.82%, and if we skip ahead to the pink column, you can see that's where we started then our budget for 19, or 18-19 with a beginning balance of $19.9 million. What we'll see in the far left column, the fall update, I wanted to show you what our...
Far right.
Far right, thank you. On the far right, what our now known ending fund balance will, how that'll impact our budget, so we updated the beginning fund balance with a $22.5 million. We kept the revenue and the expenditures constant, and if we don't change anything else, our ending fund balance for the 2018-19 school year would be $21.4 million, or 13.91%. And it's here that I'd like to make note of what we touched upon on the earlier slide about the purchases. It was about $850,000 of the fund balances committed for vehicle and bus purchases that were approved by the Board of Education in April 2018. This is one of those items that we took to the Board, and then we realized that this wasn't going to, the sale wasn't going to be complete before June 30th, so we adjusted the final budget amendment, and we included this in our proposed budget for 19, excuse me, for 18-19. But if you were just looking at the fund balance, it would look like our fund balance is higher than, the available fund balance is higher than what it really is. Also, I wanted to make note of just over a million dollars' worth of fund balances assigned for textbook purchases. The textbook, textbook committee began their work this year and needed some additional time, so instead of rushing that through, we're taking the time and plan to bring those recommendations to the Board this school year, and so of that, $22.5 million to about a million dollars is earmarked for textbook purchases.
So together, that's just under $2 million of the fund balance that has been assigned and already approved by the Board. It should be earmarked for those dollars. So that's going to be gone, yeah, that'll be gone out of that fund. Yes, okay.
And I wanted to make mention too, excuse me, go ahead.
I'm sorry, when you were discussing fund balances, can you tell us the number that the state recommends for a baseline fund balance?
I'd be happy to. The Michigan School Business Officials recommends a fund balance of 15% to 20%. A lot of reasons for the fund balance, I know we have talked about that every time since we talk about finances, the need for the healthy fund balance. Our funding from the state is determined annually, and sometimes it's even adjusted after the fact during the middle of the year. So having a healthy fund balance allows us to continue our programs and not have to make any cuts during the year. We've also talked about the vast array of needs across the district too, and having a healthier fund balance allows us to start having dialogue of what supports we can put in place to assist our students. Another positive thing too is regarding cash flow, having a positive cash flow. This is now our second year that we haven't had to borrow money during the beginning of the school year to make our payments, that we've had enough money in the bank, so that's another huge benefit. This also looks favorable for our, for...
Closer.
Closer? This is also, also favorable when we go out to sell bonds, if our community were to approve another bond. This shows financial stability in our district, and we'd be getting a better rating on the bonds, which be, mean lower interest rates and whatnot, so savings to our taxpayers. So while we're very happy with where we are, you know, projected at possibly being just shy of 14%, we still do compare that with where MSBO, where the recommendation is, and we're still just shy of that, so.
We would, and I believe that our, that our guest from Plant Moran will get into this a little bit more as we go into the audit, but as we've discussed many times, the Board of Education and the administration have worked very, very hard to make it a priority to grow the district's fund balance, to increase the financial stability of the district, so we could provide the support that is so needed in so many areas. So we are extraordinarily pleased with this because it is not that we have received significant new funding from the state, that much of this has been built thanks to the Wayne County Enhancement Milage, partially through, getting through the sale of property, as well as the budgeting practices that have been utilized. So while we've been able to increase our expenditures and increase the support, and really meet many of those goals that we identified within our, within our proposal when we first discussed the Wayne County Enhancement Milage, we are ever cognizant of where that fund balance is, that it has grown, that it's provided us some financial stability, and also aware that some of those funding sources are not necessarily the consistent ongoing revenue. And so I know the Board has been especially diligent about taking a look at, at those pieces as well.
Mrs. Burton.
So, Mrs. Smith, if I'm looking at the far right column, the 2018-19 fall update, and I'm looking at the ending fund balance of $21.4 million, if we then deduct the million dollars in textbooks that we have already committed out, and the $850,000 in buses and other vehicles that we committed out at the end of last school year, but have not yet, had not yet received the invoices for, deducting those two, is it accurate then that, that our ending fund balance right now is, that is more available is the 19.6, or somewhere close to that, as opposed to the 21.4?
Because we knew that the school bus purchases would be coming out of the 18-19 school year, we did go ahead and include those in the expenditures in the far right column.
Okay.
As well as the textbook purchases, so the ending fund balance does include those two items.
It does include it, okay, great.
The one thing...
So it's, it's not reflected at the top column of the 22.5?
Correct.
That's where it's not included, okay. Not included in the 22.5, but it is included by the time we get down to the bottom.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, during our next quarterly update, I'll be bringing a formal budget amendment for the Board for review and potential approval, and by that time, we'll also have some additional information such as our actual fall student count. So when we put the budget together, we didn't know what that would be yet, so we did our best guess. It looks like we're on target for where we thought we'd be. We'll also have other things too. During our proposed budget, we had an estimate of our staffing levels and where they would be, but now we actually have staff in place, so we'll also be able to update our expenditures for, for that, and anything else that, you know, the, the district becomes aware of. And so we do plan to bring that to you in December.
Just a semi-related question. Do you recall when we did the, the budget for the year, the actual proposed budget? How many pupils we accounted for? And I know we now have final numbers, and where that fell in our predictions for budget check?
Sure. We estimated we would be down approximately 75 FTEs for this school year, and that took into account 13 different factors and metrics that we took a look at.
Is shared time one of those?
Yes.
Okay.
However, the shared time numbers have come in actually lower than we anticipated, so we knew, for instance, with the closing of Ladywood and some other programming changes, that we would be down, we anticipated about 38 or 40 FTEs, and we're actually down more than that. It's not entirely surprising that the enrollment at many of the private and parochial schools that we service through shared time are also facing declining enrollment, as have, as have most of, most of the districts around us. Right now, we anticipate, again, these are still tentative fall counts until we reach the 30-day period after the count, and right now, we're down, I believe, 185?
I think it's about around 185.
185, so we're within about 10 of where we budgeted. So as far as a budget impact, we should have planned appropriately for the decline in enrollment, but we'll have the final count within the next couple of weeks.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson, President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Battlefield. Allison, I know that we get a good chunk of change through the Enhancement Milage, and there's certainly no guarantee that that will continue when it, when it finally runs out. Are you able to give us an idea of what our fund balance would look like without that money in there?
We do receive about $5 million a year from the Wayne County Enhancement Milage, and we have taken that out. We've looked at what that will do in the next couple of years, and it took our fund balance well under 10%. I'm trying to remember the exact percent, I can't remember that, but I know it was well under 10%. So that's definitely something that we're cognizant of. I'm happy with the way that the district proceeded. A lot of districts started spending the Wayne County Enhancement Milage as soon as the revenue started collecting, and our district took a more conservative role and started, the collection started in December of 16, I believe. And so in that budget year, we simply collected the revenue, and then we worked as a team to come together and come up with recommendations for the Board on what additional supports we were going to put into place. So that, that allowed us to begin the process of building our fund balance by collecting those revenues and then not planning to spend them until the following year or so. We've definitely been very judicious with how we've spent those funds, and we take it very seriously, the, you know, what the voters have done for the district, and we've been able to put a number of things in place, but we do recognize that these are time limited. It was a six-year milage, and that there's a chance that that milage isn't going to get renewed, so we have to be very cautious with the fund balance that we do have right now, and the revenue that we continue to collect over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll ask our friends from Plant Moran to come up. Again, this is Lisa Vargo and Tom Marchese.
Thank you for having us here today. Very happy to close out another audit. So my name is Lisa Vargo. I'm a partner at, at Plant Moran in the K-12 arena, and I'm in the Auburn Hills office. So with you, you should have the, a few documents. You're going to have a very thick document, that's, that's the basic financial statement. You're also going to have a, the single audit report, an end of audit letter, and the graph presentation. So what we, Tom and I thought that we would do is we're going to spend some time and do a deep dive into the graphs, really talk about the numbers and the analytics. Then Tom's going to kind of go over the financial statements, some high-level changes of things that might look different this year than it's looked in the past, and then take any questions. So the first thing that I want to address is really what our role is. So our role as independent auditors, we come in, we do risk assessments, we do not test internal control, but we certainly assess them. So we come out, and we work very closely with Allison's department to make sure we really understand how things are working out here, and then from that point, we plan our audit accordingly. So I'm happy to report that we did not have any variations from how we initially planned our audit. Had we come out and had to change our audit approach, I would need to disclose that to the Board, and we were not, and so we were able to proceed as we planned. Also, there, there are various opinion letters in the financial report and the single audit report. So I'm just going to lump those letters together and say all those letters issued have an un-modified opinion. An un-modified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we can provide that your financial statements are free of material misstatement, so that's fantastic. Also, take one step further into the single audit report, that's a compliance report. So we are really bound by the rules of the federal government about what program we test. It's almost like a rotational testing, so we're not looking at every single program every year, but we're really focusing on the high-risk, larger programs. This year, it was the Child Nutrition Program, and when we go out and we do single audit testing, we are bound to very detailed-type testing, so if anything is out of sort of the sample that we choose, we do need to report it. And we had nothing that, that needed to be reported in the single audit. So Livonia will continue to be, as we define, a low-risk audit E in the eyes of the federal government, so that's fantastic. So with that, I'm going to jump into the, the graphs. So really, Tom and I decided this year, we really wanted to focus the numbers on the graphs, and then when Tom jumps into the financial statements, we'll kind of look at the footnotes and changes on the footnotes from that perspective. So the first graph here, this is the balance sheet of all your governmental funds. It really is a snapshot in time. Again, according to GASB 34, they require us to look at major programs. So what are the programs here that really have the most activity? Of course, it's always the general fund, the special education fund, the sinking fund, and your bond fund, and these would be consistent major programs to the previous year. The general fund assets increased about $5 million from last year, and that increase represents mostly cash. The liabilities remained consistent, and the fund balance also then therefore increased $5 million. We're going to go into the fund balance in a few slides further in the presentation. The special ed fund did stay consistent with prior year. Both the sinking fund and the bond fund did decrease, but that has to do with the capital activity, and the total capital assets were increased by approximately $30 million this This next graph represents a summary of just the general fund, taking the revenue and other sources, comparing it to the subtotal of the expenditures and other financing sources. Earlier, I know that we were talking about the budgets. What we wanted to really point out here is the budget comparing the actual to the final amended budget, and the variance. So as you can see, the revenue variance is less than 1%, and the expenditure variance is even less than that, it's a .71%. So kudos to management for keeping their eye on that, to understanding what goes into the budget. I will say, I don't see budgets this closely in a lot of my districts, so that is a great job in that budgeting. Also, on this slide, we're going to real briefly look at the fund balance, and again, I know that Allison talked about the fund balance. At the end of June 30th, 2018, the total fund balance is up to $22.5 million, which is approximately a 15%. You know, when you, when you look at the fund balance as a percent of expenditures, Allison did mention that this, that the recommendation is 15%. The state average is also about 13%. Keep in mind that the state average of the 13% includes charters, includes all schools of all school sizes, so you can slice and dice that a whole bunch of different ways and analyze it, but you know, you're really, you, there's been a lot of effort into increasing your fund balance, you've done a fantastic job really focusing in on that. This slide shows the revenue for the general fund for the year ended June 30th, 2018. As you are aware, the largest portion of funding, which is about 74%, comes from the state. This includes a state portion of the foundation allowance, as well as a categorical funding. As a reminder, included in the state revenue is approximately $13.5 million in funding from the retirement system, but again, that's an in and an out. There's no... There's no effect to fund balance related to that. And also, the other thing I do like to point out is this revenue, although be it your largest section of revenue, really is out of your control. That is all coming in from the state. The next largest component is your local revenue at $29.2 million, which is comprised of property taxes. The other revenue represents your special ed, transfers, and sale of fixed assets or land. And again, Allison did touch on the Enhancement Millage. So the Enhancement Millage was about $4.8 million in the current year, and I think Allison said it great. I mean, you really -- the Enhancement Millage, don't really exactly know what's going to happen with that. Even if it does get reapproved by the voters, charter schools will be included in it next time, so -- and that it does get reallocated every year based on your FTEs. All right. So the next graph, we just really wanted to kind of point out the possible nonrecurring or expiring revenue sources that are included in the General Fund. So included in here -- oh.
The ones on the smaller screens.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Because I can't read my type. So this is just a quick graph to give the reader some ideas of some, like I said, the one-time, nonrecurring, potentially expiring.
I think that's just an older PowerPoint version, so the ones on the screen, for whatever reason, match our slides.
Okay, the one above there. Okay. The largest portion in this is the Enhancement Millage, which we spoke about. The other thing to kind of keep in mind, this year, for the '17-'18 year, there was approximately $400,000 of the sale of land proceeds. And again, these are revenue hits that won't necessarily happen every single year. So it's very important to really understand your type of revenue sources that you have so you're not continuing to commit future obligated costs associated with them. And the other item I did put in here is the Section 147(c)(2). It was about $2.2 million this year. They continue to refer to this as a one-time foundation payment, but again, it's coming in and going right back out. Do I think it's going to continue to? I think some source of this will continue, but you don't know for sure. You know, there's no guarantee from the state that that is going to be something that's going to continue. The next slide, this slide takes the district's expenditures and shows them by objects. Essentially, where are the -- where's the money being spent? As you would expect, in an organization of people, the largest component is salaries and benefits. So salaries and benefits comprise approximately 90% of your total expenditures. This is comparable to last year and also what we do see in many districts throughout the state. The majority of the districts would be anywhere usually about 80% and plus on the salaries and wages and benefits. And so then, with that, take a moment to look at the retirement cost. As a reminder of what we discussed on the revenue section, this section includes the revenue from the state of approximately $13.5 million, which comes in as revenue and right back out as expenditures, and that's part of that retirement cost. The other components, both in dollars and percents, are very similar to last year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Oh, yes. I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
You talked about the average of what the fund balance is through the state.
Yeah.
Do we have an average between that? You said some districts have an 80% salaries to budget. Is there an average, a state average? You said it really varies, depend on district.
As far as the percent of --
Right.
So what we have -- I think the average that I have read is 80% and above.
In the state of Michigan.
In the state of Michigan.
Okay. Thank you.
You'll see variance on that. Just to add to that, a lot of districts have privatized transportation, food service, custodial. So you'll see a shift from the salaries and benefits over to purchase services.
That's a good point. That is a good point, and kind of how you're classifying it, including the substitute teachers as well.
Okay, thank you.
On Slide 7, we just have a quick update on the new accounting statement, GASB-75. So in recent years, the district has presented a near $300 million liability for the pension, underfunded pension liability for MIPSers. This year, new to this year is the GASB-75 OPEB portion. So this represents the healthcare benefits for the retirees and the unfunded portion of the MIPSers retirement system. So the district adopted that as of 7/1, 2017, so this will be the first year that it is presented within the government-wide statements. A couple items to note, this will not -- GASB-75, like GASB-68, will not impact the fund-level statements. Nearly all districts in Michigan will show a deficit net position on the government-wide statements because of their MIPSers participation and allocated share of the MIPSers liabilities. Generally, we do not see the district's bond rating being impacted by these liabilities being shown on the government-wide statements. On Slide 8, this illustrates the impact of GASB-68 and 75. You can note the deficit net position, but no impact to the fund level. So on the left side, you have the government-wide statements, the total assets of $353 million, which would include capital assets. You have total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, $258 million. This would include your long-term bonded debt and the OPEB and pension portion of the MIPSers liabilities. Or, I'm sorry, it does not. GASB-68 and 75 impacts, includes that. So at the end of the day, you have a $262.7 million deficit net position compared to a $71.7 million fund balance. So we're talking some pretty large numbers, but again, on a fund level, it does not have an impact. On Slide 9, we have a graph that just shows the historical trend of the General Fund revenues and expenditures for the past 10 years. As recently as 2013 and '14, the district's incurred fund balance decreases within the General Fund, but for the past four years, the district has added to the fund balance. You can see the cost of education continue to rise, especially as it relates to employee retirement cost, particularly from '17 to '18. You can see a pretty elevated trajectory on the trend line. Slide 10 presents some of the declining enrollment within the district over the past 10 years, which is a bit counterintuitive to the rising cost of that are listed on the district's financial statements. The state membership trends just suggest an aging community here in Livonia. Though costs are rising, based on the previous slides, pupil counts decreasing, which implies higher cost per pupil. Moving on to the next slide, Slide 11, we have a chart that demonstrates the fund balance's percent of revenue, which is a key metric that the state applies to measure the financial health of districts across the state. Since 2014, the district has improved their fund balance percentage from 2.72% to a commendable 14.36%, which is trending towards the MSBO 15% fund balance, recommended guideline. Very few districts, and especially, we've said this earlier, the size of Livonia, do not have fund balances as large as this, but we do commend the district for it to address any unforeseen circumstances, and as Ms. Oakwes put it, add to the financial stability of the district. So while the final slide is a thank-you slide, we do have a little bit more to present in terms of the financial support.
Don't get too excited. Almost, almost. There's more coming.
So as Lisa said, I won't go into a terrible amount of depth within the financials. I'll touch on a couple high-level items that I think will give you an idea about some of the highlights at the district for the '17-'18 fiscal year.
Are you in the --
This will be the financial report.
Report to the Board of Education?
The financial statement.
Yeah, the financial statement. It's the bound copy on your right side.
Financial report, all right.
This one?
I'm sure I'm on the same.
That's correct. Financial report.
Allison's taking care. She's the best.
Thank you.
And as we progress, feel free to interject with any questions you have. Page 1, as Lisa said, offers unmodified opinion, which is the highest level we can provide to the district. Moving on to the government-wide statements, beginning on page 10, the statement of net These statements are presented on a full accrual basis. Some of the more significant changes to the fund-level statements just involve the capital assets of $248 million, the pension and OPEB liabilities of $287 million and $98 million respectively, and the net position at the bottom, as I mentioned in the previous slides, shows a deficit net position of $332 million. Slide 11 is the statement of activities, and again, this is presented on a full accrual basis. One item to point out here is just the cumulative effect of change in accounting. This represents the GASB-75 adoption, and you can see, again, it's a big number, $100 million added to the deficit net position.
Can't use the MIPSers offset.
On Slide -- or page 12, we get into the governmental funds and the total modified accounting. So users of the financial statements typically find the fund-level accounting more beneficial and informative. So on page 12, I'll just point out a couple of highlights. We have, within the General Fund, $24 million of receivables due from other governments. This represents primarily amounts due for state aid in July and August. We have $52 million of restricted assets, and these are primarily for capital projects and debt service funds. This fund balance in those two columns, you can see, is listed as restricted. So again, these would be for the purposes of servicing debt and capital improvements throughout the district.
So that would be primarily bonded sinking funds, right?
Correct. Perfectly correct. Within the General Fund balance, towards the bottom, in the far-left column, we show the committed fund balance for approved vehicle purchases of $845,000. The assigned fund balance of $1.1 million related to subsequent year's budget. This reflects the 1819 budget that was approved in June of 2018, where it had expenditures in excess of the revenues. So for that reason, we have to assign a portion of the fund balance from the unassigned. So at the end of the year, we show a $20.5 million unassigned General Fund balance. On page 14, we show the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. I'll focus on the General Fund here. This, on the bottom, you can see that the General Fund increased $5.8 million this year, up to $22.5 million. That represents a 35% increase. Slide 11 previously showed this. Again, a key metric that's used by the state is fund balance's percentage of revenue, and the district is approaching that 15% line, which, again, we just cannot emphasize enough. And another metric that we present in the management letter later is just the fund balance's -- the number of weeks a school can operate with the current fund balance. So we take fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, and right now, the school can operate for seven weeks if all aid was cut off and no revenues were received, just based on the reserve fund balance. So again, that's higher than we see at a lot of districts in the area.
So just let's reiterate that, because with this many zeros, a lot of people think that we've got a ton of money. You said that with the fund balance that we have, we have seven weeks of operating funds.
That is correct, so seven out of 52 weeks.
Thank you.
On page 28, we get --
Can I make a question?
Absolutely.
On page 14, the net change in fund balance of the $5 million, does that include the assigned fund balance, or is the assigned fund balance over and above that?
So this would include the assigned fund balance. This reflects the -- $5.8 million reflects the total fund balance, meaning committed, assigned, and unassigned.
Okay, yeah. So that $5.8 includes the just-under $2 million that is assigned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Assigned and committed.
Yes, thank you.
So on page 28, I'll begin to point out a few of the key items within the footnotes. We start with Note 3, and again, we did not have any -- we did not identify any significant overages within the budget as far as expenditures being significantly over what the school district budgeted, which is illegal per state law. So we do have a disclosure requirement to indicate that the school district did not have significant expenditure budget variances. On page 32, we have Note 7. And Note 7 just presents breakout of capital assets for the current fiscal year, '17-'18. You can see that there's $27.7 million of additions, and at the end of the year, net governmental activity capital assets were $247.6 million. On page 33, we show a summary of the long-term debt. The long-term debt's primarily represented by the general obligation bonds, and they have a balance of $201 million. Moving on to page 35, from page 35 to 40, we showed the extensive disclosures for the activity related to the MIPSers retirement plan. So I won't go into a ton of detail here, but the major point from this footnote is the fact that there's a lot of assumptions that go into this estimate, and it is very sensitive. And you can see on page 40, some of the sensitivity analysis that are done for the net pension liability, the OPEB liability, based on cost trend rates and discount rates for the plan. And the total value of these liabilities can range anywhere from $300 million to $450 million. So again, it's something that we'll point out later in the management letter as well. Just there are significant estimates involved with these financial statements that we're required to communicate per GAAP.
With regard to MIPSers?
With regard to MIPSers. Thank you.
And Tom, that $300 to $450 million, that is, for the state and our portion of it, is divided out, and that's what we have to reflect?
So the $450 million is your allocated share of --
That's our own share, our special.
Right. And so the number that's reported is the $287 million for the pension liability, and then the $97.9 million for the OPEB portion, or the allocated share of the OPEB liability.
Tom, could you just, for the benefit of the people who are watching, what OPEB means?
Sure. So what this means is that the MIPSers retirement system does not have, based on actuarial estimates, the retirement plan is underfunded, and I believe the most recent numbers is $22 billion. And that was for the pension portion. For the OPEB portion, it's about $8 billion, I've read. So what that means through GASB-68 and 75 -- So what that means, through GASBY 68 and 75, all school districts in Michigan have to report an allocated share of this liability. Now, it does not mean that the retirement system is going to send all these districts in Michigan an invoice for $287 million. It just means that, per accounting standards, we have to, you have to report this within your financial statements as your allocated share of the underfunded MIPSers obligation because of your participation within the retirement system.
And that acronym, OPEB, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. So those are the retirement, or the health insurance benefits that retirees receive from the state. And then we've got the pension piece, which was included in our statements in previous years, but there's new pieces there, retire, or the health insurance costs to, for the retirees.
Okay, and can you repeat the 200 and some odd billion dollar number again?
So it was, this is an estimate again, $22 billion for the pension side of it, for the entire state retirement system, and then $8 billion for the healthcare, other post-employment benefits obligation.
Eight billion?
And that is over what period of time?
So it's perpetual. It's looking forward into the future, and that's why you see the rising retirement cost at the district, because the contribution rates across all school districts within the state are increasing to put this retirement plan at a status quo so that it can fund itself rather than being underfunded. So the retirement rates are increasing to offset this underfunded position, so that maybe in 50 years from now, there won't be any allocated share of a pension liability on the district's financial statements.
So in other words, it's eating away, the increased rate that we're paying is essentially eating away at the underfunded portion?
Yes.
And it may take a couple of lifetimes to get there.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, essentially, I think what the GASBY was trying to do is really to make governmental statements look more like what people are used to seeing in a for-profit environment. So like your Fords, GMs, Chryslers, they're required to put, you know, post-employment healthcare and pension costs on their statements. Okay. This is taking that to make it equivalent. Okay, thank you.
The final page to point out is just the, page 43, it's within the required supplemental information. This is your budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. I won't go into a terrible amount of detail here, but we did summarize this and slide through the presentation, and as Lisa pointed out, the district's variance percentage for revenues was 0.99%, and the expenditures were 0.7%. So again, high praise for the districts for passing a very precise budget. The final item that we have to discuss is the management letter. So within the management letter, that'll be the report to the Board of Education. Within this letter, we just discussed the results of the audit, one recommendation we had related to the food service fund balance, and a few informational items that we deem to be value-added to school districts throughout the county that just describes the statewide school landscape. So on page two, Lisa covered it. Our responsibility is just to plan and perform an audit to obtain a reasonable, not absolute, assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. On page three, we go into some of the more qualitative aspects of the audit, and the one item to point out here is the paragraph related to the most sensitive estimates involved in the financial statements. We touched upon it earlier, again, the MIPSers, OPEB, and pension liabilities. So we are pleased to report as well that we encounter no difficulties or disagreements with management. And on page four, we go into corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So the lone item we have in this paragraph relates to an omitted disclosure for potential range of loss of an ongoing lawsuit. So that was the only item to report there. And moving on to page six, we have our recommendation, and essentially what this food service fund balance recommendation relates to is just spending down the fund balance that's accumulated over time within food service to improve, or on capital projects and just improving cafeterias around the district and other means to spend down the fund balance.
Just to touch upon that, too, we've talked with the board about that and our plans for the future going forward. Wanted to mention the fund balance restriction on the food service is three months of operating expenditures. So for that, that equates to about $100,000, and we're at about $600,000, so we're not very close to that limit, but it's something that we want to watch, obviously don't want to get there in. So we do have plans to spend down our fund balance.
Thanks, Allison.
Sorry. So the corrected or uncorrected misstatements, when it says range of loss on a lawsuit, is that correct, that it's referencing the Livonia, or the food service? Do I have that correct?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
That's why I was confused. Okay, so, all right, I get it now.
Yeah, the actual disclosure is in the financial statements, but just not the range of loss.
Okay, got it. It was, yeah.
And there is some heavy literature here from page seven to 17 that I won't touch on each item individually, but there are a few subjects that are going on right now that, just to point out, on page 12, we have an overview of the Marshall Plan. The Marshall Plan's been designed by the governor to help fill the talent gap within tactical and trade skills in Michigan. So employers have had or cited concerns throughout Michigan that one of the areas of improvement is just the trade and tactical skills within the workforce available in Michigan. So the governor has designed a plan and set aside funding allocations to allow districts to fund innovative programs to promote and cultivate technical and trade skills in Michigan, at which they expect to improve the economy overall by drawing employers to the state.
If I may just put in a plug for a minute. Our district has applied, and Mr. Willenberg and Mrs. O'Brien are working on that from the central office end, along with some of our staff in the schools, along with our business partner in Ralsh Industries, and we have successfully made it through the first round of the grants, and we are moving on to round two. So we are hoping to take part in the Marshall Plan grant, and I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of our folks who have worked hard to put that proposal forward thus far.
Great. On page 17, we have some of, just a segment addressing current exposures to data breaches. We've attended several seminars recently that experts have called data the new currency in the digital age. So the most popular targets of cyber criminals are young children, because the detection of any fraudulent credit cards or open accounts wouldn't be detected until they did credit checks years later in their adulthood. So it's something that we have stressed to all districts throughout the state that are our clients, to make sure that any susceptibilities to cybercrime are being examined and addressed diligently. That is all we have within our presentation, and we just want to, just that. But we do want to thank Allison and the business office for another smooth audit, and thank you to the board for allowing us the continued opportunity to serve. So thank you.
Questions, guys?
Mrs. Burton? I've been on the board for many, many years, and I'm thrilled that Livonia continues to have an unmodified opinion. And again, for those folks who may be listening from home, that is your highest level of assurance, that our department's being run very, very well. I'd like to thank Allison Smith and the entire department. It is a pleasure to lay our head down tonight and not worry about what's going on in our department here, and thank you so much for the hard work that you do. If any of our, when you think about the number of dollars that flow in and out of our school district to cover so many things, I only wish that I could come inside of 1% in my own home budgeting, let alone the size budget that you deal with. So thank you so very much.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to pick on this thing. So the corrected and uncorrected misstatements is referring to note 12, correct, of the financial statements? So it would be page 41?
Yes, note 12, that's correct.
Okay, note 12 in the financial statements. And although it does state that there are some possible contingent liabilities, it's also saying that even though we're not putting a financial dollar amount on those, that the outcome for these is immaterial to the district, which means that, can you just explain immaterial?
Yeah, so the requirement for that disclosure would, so if a loss is reasonably probable, it would need to be recorded in your statements.
Correct.
But because the attorneys are disclosing to us that there is a probability and there is a range associated with the probability, it needs to be disclosed.
Okay.
So the lawsuit itself has been disclosed, but the range of loss, because it is such a very large range of loss, has been concluded that it is not, it's not going to sway a reader once they're reading these financial statements, for multiple reasons, and one of them being because that range is so large, and, you know, it is so, there's still uncertainty associated with these lawsuits.
Okay, so in reading, reading this paragraph and then reading note 12, we have an unmodified opinion, which means even though it's talked about, and these are the management letter, correct?
Correct.
As part of this, is that it should not be construed that we're misstating or incorrectly reporting. Everything's been reported correctly. We just noted it as in our management letter.
Right.
And can you just explain the purpose of the management letter?
So with the management letter in general, we have a requirement to report to management and the board if there are any potential past journal entries. It's just, again, making sure that we have full communication with both management and the board between, you know, with Plant Moran. And so what we're saying is that, according to the codification of GASBY, they would say, ideally, because there is a predicted range of loss, they would say the technical answer is it should be included into the footnotes.
Okay.
However, because the range of loss is so large, and it is not reasonably probable, our position, and we agree with management, that to omit that range of loss would not be misleading to the financial statements.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, no problem, no problem.
Any other questions, sorry? Is anything? Okay.
All right, awesome. Well, we'll see everybody in a couple weeks.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mrs. Smith, does this conclude our report for tonight?
It does, thank you very much.
It does, thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's time, diligence, and questions, and so then we can move on to our next agenda item. President Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Butterfield. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Oh, and this is gonna, we're gonna bring this, it'll be up for a vote, correct? We'll have the presentation and then the vote on this for...
October 29.
October 29, great, okay.
All right, that'll move us on to item number four, building in sight, and our Chair, Mr. Sonders.
Why, thank you. So we have five items this evening, starting with letter A, quarterly dashboard report for the 2013 bond. Mr. Francis and Mr. Smith are joining us. Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? Great. Good. It is time this evening. Mr. Scott Smith from Plant Moran Crescent, owner representative, is here to run through the quarterly dashboard report. This has been going on for several years now throughout the 2013 bond, and just so everyone at home is on the same page, so to speak, in a timeline fashion, this will be covering quarter two of 2018, so through June 30, 2018. In the relatively near future, Plant Moran will come back, and I'm guessing it'll be Mr. Smith, who will do quarter three for the board. We didn't want to, even though we could have put them together in the years that this has been occurring, that hadn't happened, so we wanted to sort of keep it clean and continue to do one quarter as they come, just to keep everybody on the same page. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith to walk you through the report you have.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. As we stated, this, the bottom-middle portion of this is through June 30. The top-middle portion, that's Plant Moran's accounting that we're doing currently, so that's more current, and you'll see that that's dated October 3. The reason for the differences is the way that we reconcile with the district's accounting, and we do that on a quarterly basis. So as Mr. Francis said, I'm guessing probably December timeframe, we'll be back, and we'll do the, through September 30, the third quarter results. So just working through this, we've got this broken into six parts, some of it financial, some of it kind of what's going on in the district, but we always come back to the goals and objectives. I will kind of fly through that since we're towards the tail end. I hope that the board, the community administration, has been pleased with what's happened over the last five or so years. We've accomplished a lot. We've spent a great deal of money improving the district in a lot of different ways, and as we get into the numbers, you'll see where those numbers total to, because we're getting close to that original bond amount. So starting with the middle on the upper section, this is our budget summary as of October 3, 2018. I would like to point out some things here that are different from the previous one, and really, that's kind of our budget augmentation. We originally started with $195 million bond issue. Over the past few years, we've augmented it in different ways, and I just wanted to recap those. So the first one is alternate funding source is the sinking fund, and that's $5,310,500. And that really consists of a couple of things. Going back to Franklin and Stevenson, we moved $2.5 million per school to assist with, mostly with some of the site work there. And then the 300 and plus the $10,500 represents the entryway arches here at the administration building, as well as over at Nigie Arrow. So the $10,500 was the design fees, and the $300,000 was the construction cost. The second alternate funding source was our capital projects fund, and this really happened over at Garfield Community School. And the 517, actually, it's going to be 516,390 when we come back next time, but the 516, 390 will be the actual cost that was allocated against the capital projects fund to fund a portion of that project. And then the new one for this month, or for this quarter really, is the interest income column. This is the first time you guys have probably seen us report on this, but in working with the district over the last five or so years, we're going to report on the 1.5 million. That number continues to change, it continues to grow, albeit at a slower pace now that we've got less in the bank. But that is a conservative number, and one that we feel comfortable reporting to the district. And it's also important because we're using that income to help fund the Nigie Arrow renovations that are going to be bid out later this year. So all in all, that, those three augmentations total seven, roughly 7.3 million, bringing our current budget really overall to $202,327,890. If you look at the bottom section of the middle, there's a little footnote down there, and that helps recap some of the things I just stated, but it's there for those who want to take a look and understand where those numbers came from, again. So that's the number we're managing, too. Our current commitments are just under $190 million now, that's up about $7 million from last quarter, or from, really, from May was the last budget. That's up about 7 million from last quarter, or from, really, from May was the last budget summary. That was with the March 31 quarter end. Our actual pays are up almost $22 million. So, again, that's catching up with all the bills from last term, all the work from the summer. We got the playgrounds in there. There's a lot of things, so it's been a busy several months. And our actual cost to complete is down to 6.4 million. That's down about 14 million. So, that number continues to come down. We do have commitments to, of course, add on. We'll be, the district will be making future furniture purchases, equipment, technology. Of course, we have the Nigieiro renovation and some other things as well. That's where we stand currently from a budget summary. Moving over to the right, actually, I'm going to drop straight down below the cash flow finances. That says of June 30. So, again, there's several months of difference in there, and that's why the numbers don't tie out exactly. But through June 30, again, we've depleted the entire Series One funds, and we've exhausted approximately 56 million of the 87-plus million dollar funds for Series Two. Now, I'd like to focus more on what's going on in the district, so that the three-month schedule, really. We're in the process of closing out work at Churchill, and then the, all the summer projects from this summer, Webster, Buchanan, Jackson, the Career Center, even the entryways. We continue to work on Nigieiro. We're probably, I think about two-thirds of the way done with design on that right now, and next month, and, excuse me, November is next month, we're going to be presenting to you guys our DD presentation for that. It'll be similar format as before, just a little condensed because we're down to just the one school, but we'll fill you in on kind of what we're doing there. It's along the same lines as we've talked about in the past. We're just putting it to paper. We're in the process of getting our second estimate on the project. That'll be presented within the next week or so. George Ock Company is working on that with us right now. We don't expect any snags with that. Things are trending in the right direction. We've made some discussions at the district level to keep us within budget, and so things are going well there, and we'll have a, as part of our presentation, we'll be presenting that estimate relative to the budget. Continuing forward, assuming we get approval at the presentation in November, we'll be moving forward with bidding the workout and completing our construction drawings. The thought would be to bid them out in December, take bids before Christmas, and then come back to you guys in January's meetings and present those and try to get those on board so we can start with the material, excuse me, material procurement and the submittals and just writing the contracts and all the administrative that goes along with that. That's mostly up from a bond perspective. Again, the district will be coming, they'll be making additional furniture purchases. I think there's some on the docket for tonight as well.
There's a, just, you mentioned the furniture purchases. Just to remind the board and the folks at home, a little earlier than elementary, the secondary first had, each of the middle schools and high schools and the Career Center had some furniture, bond furniture money to do flexible furniture programs and ideas within the buildings, so they've been running through those, and several of them have actually come to fruition, and they really look, really look good in the buildings. We've had the good fortune to go over and see some places like Stevenson and Franklin, what they've done. We'll be talking to you a little bit tonight about Technology Collaboration Room at Churchill. So, separate from what I'm going to be discussing tonight, Churchill is using their flexible furniture towards that. Emerson and Holmes and Frost have projects, and Mr. Willenberg's going to be bringing something to you this evening, and Mrs. Scott has been working with the elementaries, and I've been helping them with that as well, to run through some ideas and look through some catalogs and different things that they would like to do for the children at the elementaries, using also some bond furniture money to have some flexible furniture, some additional seating, et cetera, et cetera, in the classrooms. So, it's, that's some of the fun stuff that you can, you know, help kids in the classroom having different spaces for either a class to go, mostly at the secondary level, or having more choices for children in an elementary classroom for seating options.
So, that's from a bond perspective, those are the main things. Obviously, we concurrent to all this, we have the sinking fund projects, and again, those are really three components. We have roofwork, we have parking lot work, and we have athletic field work. So, for the pavement work, we've broken that. There's several schools, just like last year, again, we've broken that into different bid packages, and so, we'll probably be bidding out next month, the first wave of those. We're actually doing a traffic, a little traffic study over at Emerson currently, looking at some options there to help improve traffic flow and hopefully implement that into our design. But the first wave of those will be bid out this year, and again, probably December will be the timeframe for recommending those work. We'll continue on with design for the remaining projects and bring those probably in the spring. I wouldn't suspect those will be till probably about March, as far as those go. We're also getting some boring and geotechnical work done over at Jackson in anticipation that, depending on where things fall, that might be something we can look at this year, or we might work at it for next year, but it won't hurt to have the information available for the designers. For the roofing, next summer, that's going to be Johnson, so that design is currently underway. We'll be bidding that out here probably next month as well. Again, look for that to be recommended and brought to the board in December. And then, the athletic field work, again, all this is concurrent, the design is, we've had, conducted numerous meetings with each of the athletic directors, as principals, those involved, so we're ready to kind of finalize the details for Stevenson and Franklin and get those, get that work going forward too, so that'll be complementary to what we've done at Churchill this year. We're also going to be starting the dugouts here soon, over at Churchill and over at Stevenson. That work's obviously been awarded, and we're getting some of the approvals and materials ready for that as well. Those are probably the next three months for that. So, a lot of design, a lot of award, some of it will carry into next year. Those also represent really our critical issues, I would say. You know, we're just trying to close out, wind down from last summer, or this summer, and get things rolling again for next summer. I updated the phasing schedule in the lower right there. Just got the one building here for 2019, Nigieiro. So, I guess with that, is there any questions on the dashboard?
Comments or questions, anyone? Mrs. Frank?
Do you anticipate being done with all of the things from last summer in October? The end of October?
Uh, no.
Or no, that's just design? Punch list is through October? Punch list and closeout of 2018? Like, do you?
Oh, for the sinking fund work?
Yes.
Yes, we're wrapping those up.
But not for the bond? The bond will be?
Correct. That's going to take a little longer.
That would be through December of 2018.
Yep, that's our goal, to get that done this calendar year.
The top, do you mean the school?
Yes.
The school punch list?
I see it right there.
That would be through December of 2018.
Perfect.
And then, the sinking fund work through October.
Perfect.
They're just a little harder to close out.
There's just so many moving parts versus the paving project and the roofing project is.
Is easier.
Yeah, completed, you look, there's less punch list type items versus when you do so many, you touch so many rooms and areas in a building, there's all those little knick-knack things that end up, or long lead items, or just so many reasons, it lingers a little bit longer.
Okay, perfect.
Mrs. Bonifield?
All the playgrounds are in?
Well, they've been in.
There. Thank you.
And from the folks, yeah, as I say, from the folks that I've spoken to, very excited, great to come back. I mean, many of the buildings had something to play on in the spring, just before they left, but, yeah, they looked really nice. And really, I'd like to, you know, to thank the maintenance and grounds team. They actually went out and also had a little program to get the, it's called the Five R, where it's, it looks like wood chips, but it's a special for playgrounds, and we did those on the areas that were still at some of the playground sites. As you know, many of the elementaries have two large play structures. We may have replaced one, and with that package came the fiber that goes on. We then went to the one that remained and those different stations and spruced those up a bit as well. So, it, they look very nice, and there's a lot of playing going on the playgrounds, as you imagine.
Mr. Francis, clearly controlled every.
I was on one, and Mrs. Scott took a picture, and so, I stopped climbing up on them.
Anything else? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Item B then. That's the Franklin and Stevenson Athletic Field Project Update.
Thank you very much. I wanted to, this really dovetails into the conversation that only maybe a moment ago, we were mentioning what was the summer sinking fund project. We've talked quite a bit about athletic fields, athletic field work that's been going on at Churchill, Stevenson, and Franklin through the summer of 2018. Most of that, of course, was all done at Churchill, but from a design and the foresight company, they've actually been working on Churchill, Stevenson, and Franklin with regard to their fields. So, if I could take you back for a moment, we decided last year, we went to go out for bid on the turf projects. We wanted to ensure that the district had a single manufacturer for turf. So, foresight worked on Stevenson and Franklin's field design, baseball, softball, football-soccer fields at that time. Then, of course, coming back into the summer, we had to finish up the dugout project, which we had put off a couple of times, as the board's aware of, that's now about to literally begin at Churchill, Stevenson. So, they've done that design work, and we have them, we're bringing to you this evening a recommendation to reengage foresight to complete the athletic projects, the design of it for Stevenson and Franklin. And when we say design, I want to make sure that it's not just the design of the drawings, that there's a lot more that foresight is doing within that contract. The folks from foresight have been there, first of all, before we even began the project, to educate us, to show us products. We even went to another neighboring school district to see their project. They spend time on pre-bid, on opening bids, post-bid interviews, walking the fields with the potential contractors. They actually work directly with myself and the sinking fund team, answering our questions, working together, getting the design that we would like, and also then, sort of a project management aspect with regard to, once the project's occurring, overseeing that, making sure that what we wanted as a district, representing us as far as making sure the design is following through, like wealth of information, all of those types of pieces, the punch lists. In fact, just today, there's emails between the athletic director from Churchill and Mike from foresight, asking, you know, when's it going to get tied up with a bow? And they worked back and forth, and I was copied on that email. So, a lot of work, I just want to make sure I'm not shortchanging the effort that they're doing when we just simply say, we would like to engage foresight in design. They're not just drawing it and walking away. They're with us before, during, and after with regard to this project. So, just want to make sure that everybody knows and understands that part of the contract. Okay? So, this evening, what we're bringing to you is, and I think you have the letter from foresight, the letter from Plant Moran, as well as my memo. Again, reinstating or bringing them officially on board is our recommendation to finish that work for the Summer 19 project with Stevenson and Franklin. You have a list of the items that are going to be occurring at Franklin High School, and a list of items that are going to be occurring at Stevenson High School. I want to remind the board that when it comes to the dollar amount, the dollar amount that we have listed is currently $99,000. Now, that's going to potentially change based upon how the bids come out, because in reality, it's 4.5% of the hard construction that occurs, and we won't know what that is until we get our bids back. But we're looking to get this out on the street next month, so we want to get bids in in calendar 18, so we now even know what we have, but also in hopes of gaining more bidders to the project. So, having said that, we do have the $99,000 in the letter based upon the scope and budget amount of work for the Stevenson-Franklin remaining in that project. But I just wanted to let the board know in advance, and it was mentioned in the Plant Moran letter as well, that once we have hard numbers, it would be the 4.5%, which they have held steady from their previous agreement with the Churchill work. So, that has not increased from the standpoint of a percentage. Okay? Did you want to, anything, if you have questions, we'd be happy to help answer those.
So, if it, if the number goes down, does their, does their percentage there, so it doesn't, it's not 99 or whatever's lower, correct?
It could be higher, it could be lower.
It's the percentage.
This is our best estimate of where we think it will be based on bids from last year.
It's not 99 or?
And budgeted items.
What happens with the estimated budget is that foresight, from their experience, they actually do many, many school district fields in the area. So, they, after long conversations with administration from the district, administration from the buildings, in fact, we met as recently as Thursday morning with both the folks at Franklin and the folks at Stevenson to go over the lists again, and they put an estimated number on the work based upon their recent history in other districts. So, if a local district recently had fencing project that occurred, well, frankly, guess what? We're the recent district that had that. We had Churchill this year, so we can work off of some of the contract numbers that we did receive, plus if there's something that we hadn't done and we're looking to do at Stevenson and/or Franklin, they can look at other neighboring districts and say, oh, well, we did X, Y, or Z there. What's the going rate that we're seeing? So, they're trying to give us a good estimate, but as we all know, the bids really is going to count in the end.
Anything else? Well, I think, just seeing the results at Churchill.
Stunning.
It turned out very nice, so we look forward to seeing what happens at the other schools.
Everyone's very excited. Like I said, we were just with the principal and athletic director at both Stevenson and Franklin Thursday morning, and there's a lot of excitement, you know, because both schools said we were just at Churchill for a recent game. We saw it. So, they're excited, everybody's excited, so.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Request that to go on the 29th, please.
Okay, we'll move on to Item C, which is the Churchill Technology Collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Let me just turn my pages over to my items, okay? So, Churchill Technology Collaboration Room Equipment. This is a recommendation for technology for a room at Churchill. I wanted to sort of paint the picture for yourselves and for those that are watching at home of what we're referring to here. This is a pilot idea that we have for Churchill High School. They have some space at Churchill that, as we started talking about going into the summer of 18 and the work that would be done from a construction standpoint, discussing with the administrative team over at Churchill, and we said, you know, what if we did something a little different? What if we made a space where teachers and students could go down to, and they'd have more technology than what is available in our traditional classrooms? Even though our classrooms now have more technology than they've had in the past, this would be different. It'd be a larger space with newer technology, or I should say, different technology even than what we have in one of our classrooms. And the principal, Mr. E2 over at Churchill, of course, was very excited to talk more. He said, listen, you know, I haven't had, I haven't done, and this is back, of course, last school, he said, I haven't done anything with the flexible furniture money. I'd be willing to use that into this room if we did technology and set it up as such. So, just as, again, to sort of paint the picture, we grabbed, we shouldn't say we grabbed, we brought in a few of the core teachers, sat down and said, what do you think of this idea? Would you use it? And if you would, what would you want to use it for? What would you want to be in there? There's a lot of excitement. We came up with the ideas of interactive touchscreen television sets. So, there's a picture of what is in, that's from SMART. That's what's in, frankly, more than three-quarters of the quote that you have in your packet are those. Putting those up, if you can imagine a large rectangular room, three sides of that room would have those screens up on them with collaborative furniture in front of each station. So, on the wall, an interactive TV that can take the, you can see the markers in there or your fingers, it's all loaded up, and you could have teams of students working at a collaborative station at their own TV station as well. And we have And we have six of those around the room so the students can break out and collaborate and work. We have extra power into the room because they want to have a green screen and cameras so they can produce and create with the students. We still have at the front now essentially two classrooms with no wall in the middle any longer and we have two screens and interactive projectors like we have in the other classrooms at the front of the room for presentation, whether that be the presentation of the teacher to the class, setting them up for whatever it is that they're going to be working on. That could even be a parent presentation by teachers or administrators used in an evening session or a day session, just having that capability for those two screens to be joined together or be separated. So you have presentation ability, you have furniture that will be, again, mobile and flexible, and you have interactive touchscreens around the room for student use. And the staff was very excited about this idea. So we're saying that it's a pilot right now for Churchill because that's where we were constructing, that's where we were able to put it in. And we want to monitor the usage of it through the school year. We're aiming for, based upon this purchase as well as the furniture purchase, for it to be up and running for second semester, engaging how much it gets used. If it gets used as much as we think it's going to get used, then we'll turn and address the other high schools and to see what we can do similarly in those buildings and perhaps if it is even a thought to discuss it at a middle school level as well. But we certainly want to make sure that we take a look at how is it being used? Is it being used? And is there a clamoring to get in and use a space? Is it being used effectively? And we can go from there. But we're pretty excited, I know Churchill's excited, to have that room up and running. So I'll take your questions if you have any.
I think Mrs. Burt, Burt is first, go ahead.
I am not familiar with interactive TV sets or touch, can you explain exactly how that's used in a classroom setting?
So it would be, it would be similar to the interactive projectors that we have right now on a single, on the front of the room. It would be interactive in that same manner. So you can, you can write on the screen, you can use your fingers or the markers, you can interlay what's on the laptop or the teacher can present to a screen with using the SMART software. So it's very similar in that sense, except it's more compact than having to have a whole whiteboard or traditional screen with the short throw. But as far as the way its capability is working, it would do many of those similar items and frankly, has software package that is probably familiar, even going back to the days of just the traditional SMART board that you could wheel out, a similar idea, but more high-tech. It's like a 4K HD screen, so it could also be used obviously as a traditional screen just to show video, but that's a pretty basic use of that as a TV as well.
Okay, so we're not really thinking of using it as a TV primarily, it's more as a display screen for it, yeah, right.
Presentations, brainstorming.
Yep, if we were all together at one of the stations in front of one of the screens and we were collaborating on a project, one of us could simply take the HDMI, plug it into our laptop or our Chromebook.
And put it right up on the screen.
And we can put it right up on the screen and then we can keep as a team manipulating, maneuvering.
Got you.
Or writing on it, etc.
Or you could stop and pull up a video clip or stop and go to a website. And so we'd be all, it was, it's almost taking a shared screen and then making that interact.
Got it, okay.
Similar to what universities and colleges have as far as areas to collaborate for university students.
Okay. And then as a follow-up, just so folks at home who may be listening, this is, the budget for this is the bond and this is the dollars that are allocated to each school to use in a collaborative endeavor.
This is actually from the tech budget, the technology budget in the 2013 bond. This is actually an add-on idea. That's why we would say we want to monitor how it's used here and then would go back in and go to other.
But it is a portion of the tech budget already of the bond?
Yes, it's already, yes.
We're not increasing the budget of the bond, but we're taking a portion of the remaining dollars of the technology budget and said, what are some unique and innovative learning experiences for our students and for our staff could we garner out of those additional funds? So it's part of the technology budget. It was not a planned purchase because we really wanted to say what would be the most current technology and how could we use it.
Right, at the time.
And then we're hoping to be able to replicate that at our other secondary schools.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson, I think you are next.
So they'll still have their furniture budget, correct?
Yes.
They're utilizing a portion of their $75,000 furniture budget for some of the flexible seating that will be around these interactive screens.
But it's still going to be used for the furniture around these.
Right, so that was one of the things that he said he wanted to do that, to put in there, because that is exactly what we discussed as a use, an appropriate use for the flexible furniture money is to place that a great majority of students would have access to and that could be used for curricular items, et cetera. And this was, just seemed to be the perfect setting for that because this room will be open to any class that wants, the teacher wants to sign up and bring them down or do after-school projects or whatever. So it would be an open item and not just for only a small portion of the students.
Well, I can tell you, these are great items. Most of you know my son Eric and he goes to cook and they use these, you know, consistently, Karen, Karen has been there. The only problem is they teach him, it's touchscreen and he doesn't distinguish when he gets home. And he keeps knocking over the television. But it's wonderful because they use it in their class and I can see what it does for the special ed kids.
That's fantastic.
This is Brett.
Thank you. I think it's a really great idea. One question I had in the cost proposal, does this SMART TV need specific software? And over time, is that something that we're going to have to purchase or repurchase or how will that work?
It is the SMART software, very similar to the idea where we get the interactive projectors that we have. That is also a specific software. If you want to be able to function with your laptop, desktop, insert, you know, computer outlet here, you would need their firmware to be able to match up, which comes with the purchase of it.
Okay, and then to follow up, does that come with a warranty or how does that work? Will that come with some type of a warranty over, I'm just thinking over time. You know, when we put these in, will we be able to maintain them?
That's 100% what the same is with everything. We had a conversation, we could go in the study session. All of these items, after a handful of years, we know where we end up with technology is generally speaking, they upgrade and update and eventually you're out of a warranty or out of a program, but we have it for the time of now. I'll check with, yeah, I'll check out what, I'll check with Mr. Plant.
Just curious as far as how that, how long that would go.
What the years on these screens are, but that's always going to be the concern.
Okay, the concern, yeah.
It's almost just a way of life now. I mean, you buy a computer, you buy a digital watch and it seems like the next one's coming out. But we'll, I'll double check and get back to you on any specific number that, this is actually through VCS, who's been doing the technology equipment throughout the bond in the district. So we can just, we have a good relationship with them, we can find out that answer.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Well, I've seen these up close on college campuses and I know the student feedback has been very good and I'm sure our high school students are going to appreciate them very much as well. All right, thank you.
I would request that on the 29th as well, please.
All right, the next item is item D, proposal from Great Northern Consulting Company. Mr. Francis, again.
Yes, sir. I wanted to bring to the board, we've discussed this in the past, recent past at a study session regarding, we have vacant or unused properties across the district. The district still holds multiple properties that most of which don't have, at least most of which that we had discussed previously, don't have a structure on them, but they are still LPS properties. We maintain them, we are responsible for them. And we thought, just, you know, Mrs. Oakwood and I were having conversations about these. Some of the questions that came up from, you know, from me was originally, you know, we maintain, we mow, we do all these things on them. And that just sort of led into more conversation of, you know, it's been, it's been several years since we've reviewed these and these are district assets and we should know, knowing that it's been almost exactly four years. It was December into January, February that the district did this previously with some other properties. And so we wanted to bring to the board the idea of entering into an agreement with Great Northern Consultants, who we've used in the past, Mr. Bowman, we, you know, many of you are familiar with him, and asking him to evaluate a handful of the properties that we have so that the district and the board can say with more certainty, we know the value of the properties that we had. You know, I was sitting and listening to the Plant Moran folks from Plant Moran and they were talking about, you know, having assets and the fact that we did happen to sell a property during the last school year and we just closed on clay early in this fiscal year. And those are one-time things and the board should know what are its assets valued at and what could you do? Whether you choose to do or not to do is up to you, but without the knowledge and information, then your hands are tied. So I wanted to bring to you today, I do have in here the two-page scope of the project they were asking Mr. Bowman to do. This is very, very similar, like I said, to what he did four years ago on some other properties. In fact, I have that original proposal for this type of same work, basically the due diligence on investigating those properties and what they might be worth in the market today. And frankly, his price is pretty much the same as it was four years ago. We were charged about $4,000 a property before and that's what he's stating that he has no more than $4,000 for property, so no more than $20,000 because we're asking to look at Adams, Hall, Jefferson, Webster, the old Webster.
I'm Lyndon.
And Wilson. Those properties are, four of them have no structure on them and one of them is currently unused. So we thought that would be a good place to start. So I open it up to questions or if Mrs. Oakwood has anything she wants to add?
I'll just add a couple of quick things. So as you recall, we've discussed this at not only a study session, but also a committee meeting. And we are now at the point that we have some information for you with regard to creating a valuation of our assets that is current. Certainly, this does not require the administration to recommend nor the board to approve any action on these items. But we did discuss, really it started with, as Mr. Francis said, the maintenance of, I think, over almost 700 acres of property across the district. And some of the challenges that come in the springtime and the summertime with maintaining not only our properties that are in use by our pre-K to post-secondary programs, all of our schools that are in session, but what happens with our vacant properties or our properties on which we may have a facility, but it's not utilized by part of our K-12 program. And so in further discussion with the board, we discussed whether or not it would be prudent to get a current valuation and options for the board to consider in future years. As you know, when we previously did our financial forums with our community during difficult budget times, one of the things that continuously came up as the number one, the number two item as far as a recommendation from our community would be to continuously take a look at land or property owned by the district which does not have current or foreseeable use in the future. And so again, does this mean that there is a fire sale on property in the district? Absolutely not. It's not what we're recommending and I don't believe that that's the direction that the board is interested in. We have utilized that judiciously over the past four years to augment the budget, which has allowed us to provide for all of the children that we serve and all of the staff that serve them by really taking a look at specific properties. It really can serve also as a dual benefit. It increases the tax base and the revenue that's coming into the city. It also allows for some new housing, which is something that not only do we hear, but we hear that across our community. And it's allowed us to make use of some of those areas and also garner some much-needed revenue for the district. We're also cognizant that that revenue is one-time revenue and so the board has again been very careful and good stewards to determine where that those dollars can be utilized. Just recently, we made a decision at the end of last year to add some dollars into the capital projects fund to be utilized for expenses that could not be covered or would not be covered by the sinking fund or the bond, knowing that if it's one-time revenue, to use it out, again, and some of those decisions on one-time expenditures makes a lot of sense. Although our board policy does allow us to utilize it to augment the general fund as well. So as we discussed this in our study session, I believe two months ago, we talked about all of the properties and I believe we had, I think, 12 or 13 properties on the list and the board had identified along with the administration, these five to get a current valuation. And again, Mr. Bowman is really an expert in this field. He is not, he does not make additional benefit. He's not involved in the real estate sales of these properties. He simply is someone who has a wealth of experience with regard to identifying the value and potential uses of specifically school and municipal properties. So we are recommending that we engage him for what's considered a pre-sale investigation. Again, the district may choose to move forward on some of these properties in the future or they may not. But at this point, you would have a current 2018, 2019 valuation of those assets.
Okay, questions? Mrs. Burt.
I personally would be in favor of a pre-sale investigation. I think it's prudent of us to get an idea of what our properties are worth. Again, I'm not saying I would want to sell all these properties off right away and I do recognize they're one-time generators of income, but I do think it would be helpful for us to know what they're worth and, like you said, explore different uses of the land that we have. We have a lot of land and I think that some of these, if you look at them, are smaller parcels that we know we may not use in the future, so.
And as, as we've found that even if the did, even if the board did want to proceed at some point to sell a piece of land, we have found that it's not a quick process.
Oh, for sure.
So, you know, that just, it's not something that's going to happen overnight and even if you want it to happen overnight, it doesn't happen overnight. So we know that anything that we do, you have to investigate first and then when the board would like to act, still things take time, so.
Sure.
This is Brett.
We've looked at land often over several years and just so the community is aware, dovetailing off of what Mrs. Oakwood said, this is certainly not a wholesale sale of all of our vacant pieces of property. However, when, in one of our recent sessions, when we looked at the number of acres that we have, as we said, we have over 700 acres of property in the district, but about 25% of those acres are not used for K-12 purposes right now, which is a significant number. There are certain pieces of property that are large, that are, such as Bryant and Dickinson, that do not appear on this list and for all of my years on the board have never been of interest in the board of selling because they are some of the largest pieces of property in the district and once they're sold, we cannot go back and get them again. But for some of these smaller pieces of property that we have not used for many years for K-12 purposes and don't foresee, going back to the 1960s when families had the number of children that we all did at that time, so we don't foresee needing these pieces of property again. If we're holding 25% of our land as non-K-12 and sometimes just simply vacant entirely, that's, that's a large number, in my opinion, of acres of pieces of land that we have to maintain that we're not going to use for the purpose of this school district, which is the purpose of educating children. So for those reasons, I'm definitely interested in taking a look at what the value of the land is and what the possibilities are, certainly not making any decisions tonight or even immediately. But I agree with my colleagues that taking a look at what the value is and making sure we are using the assets of this district for educating children at the best of our ability, I think is wise.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Senator. I don't think it really matters whether we decide that we want to sell these properties or not. I think it's just good management that we know periodically what the value of our assets are. This is a perfect opportunity. We haven't done it in a number of years and to get an idea of what these properties are worth. It's... these properties are worth, uh, and certainly, the value depends on the purchaser, too. And we can, we can get a value from Mr. Bowman's standpoint. He's an expert in knowing what those are, and the best use of those properties are. Uh, but obviously, the, the true value would be dependent upon, uh, a purchaser with an arms-length transaction, and what they're willing to pay for. But I think it's always good to know, uh, what those pieces of properties are, regards of, and whether it's a different kind of an asset, you want to know what the value is. So, I'm in favor of, uh, engaging Mr. Bowman.
Please. Mrs. Spence?
Um, I don't, is, just, are the statistics available, readily available, for the number of acres we originally had in the city? Because I think every time we sell a piece of property, we hear a little bit about, oh, we're getting rid of the property, we'll never be able to get it, but not being a, a warrant in Livonia, being a, a move-in, and having grown up on the West Side, I, I know historically that we, at one point, I believe, had 33 elementary schools, and at least four high schools at one time. I don't know if we had more, but, um, I, I think sometimes I'd like to know historically that, you know, this isn't like, all of a sudden, this sitting board has decided that we're going to sell off all our properties, that historically, when Livonia, in the 1950s, when, or the 60s or the 70s, when we had 30, over 30,000 kids in the district, we had a lot of buildings and a lot of properties. And this is not, all of a sudden, we've decided to sell these properties off, that historically, these properties have been sold off over the years, because we just don't need them anymore. And I think it's kind of going to be like South Line, where they, a lot of people see South Line growing, they're building schools, they're growing, they're building schools, but when people are telling me that, I often predict, I'm like, that, you know, in 30 years from now, right, like Livonia, their, South Line's going to be where we are today, and they're going to be selling off properties, and people are going to be questioning why they're selling off properties, right? But because the demographics change, and the state has changed, and the number of kids that people, but I just, I, I think, if it's readily available, I'd like to know historically, you know, kind of where we started out, and that over time, we have, and that may have been presented to us before.
That's okay. I think what we shared was, um, the, uh, the year that, that they were built, and whether or not we still own that property. We'd be certainly happy to include that, um, in your packet this week, and give just a little bit of the stats on, um, how many schools, when they were opened and closed, and then how many remaining parcels of land we have.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, that, I think about that, too, when we talk about work, you know, where, when we talk about, you know, closing a building, or tearing something down, that, that this is not, it's not a new thing. But this has steadily happened over the years, um, and we didn't just all of a sudden decide to do this, that, you know, we had a lot of schools in our community, and as years have gone by, and the demographics have changed, that, um, this has been a very slow, gradual process to get where we are today.
Yep, we'd be absolutely happy to get that together.
I appreciate that very, and again, if you guys disagree with spending the time on that, or it's difficult.
Oh, that's, nope, not at all.
I, I, I will, uh, you know, go with majority, but it's one thing that I've been interested in, and, and I'd kind of like to say.
It's a, it's a great and important historical perspective, and it really, um, does show the, the buildup, and then, almost immediately, how that, as those trends came down, as the population shifted.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Anyone else?
I'd like to ask that, ask that to be on the 29th?
Yes, sir.
Great. So, that concludes Item D. Uh, Item D will be, thank you, Mr..
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night. I'm done.
Uh, Item E is flexible furniture purchase for Frost and Holmes, and Mr. Willenborg will be our presenter this evening.
Hi, Mr. Center.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Centers. If I, if I did this correctly, he should have two, uh, two handouts, uh, one regarding the Frost Middle School flexible furniture proposal, and the blue-colored pages for the Holmes Middle School proposal. Last week, I gave a, an initial description, uh, of the flexible furniture plans for Frost and Holmes Middle Schools. As a refresher, the flexible furniture expenditures are part of that Phase III plan of the 2013 Bond to equip secondary schools with creative and flexible learning spaces for students. Each middle school was charged to work with their staffs to develop unique and creative learning spaces, uh, within a budget of $40,000. The Frost Plan, um, and they got a head start on this, uh, and when, last year, they, um, spent approximately half of their budgetary allotment, uh, providing tables and various seating arrangements in their community room. Their current request is to provide classroom items, and to include those sit-and-stand desks and the ball, uh, ball seats, if you will, ball chairs, as well as new bench seating in their counseling center. In addition, the Frost Plan will recreate their vestibule area into a student gathering, gathering area with a variety of tables and seating arrangements. Um, you can view those pictures, uh, on those white pages in the back, with their vestibule area, the counseling center, and some of what those chairs and, and sit-stand desks are. The Frost staff worked with Yo and Yo Computer Consulting and Interior Environments for their design and furniture needs. The combined invoices total $22,380.10. The Holmes Plan, the blue pages, uh, are the Holmes Plan. Similarly, reimagine several school areas with contemporary, contemporary furniture and enhancement of color. Their plan provides for, again, stand-up desks, uh, for student use in classrooms. They're also looking to revamp the open spaces on each side of their office area. As you walk in, on the left side, there's that large, uh, open area, um, they'll enhance that main gathering area, um, uh, with a variety of bench-type seating, and round, uh, and square tables. On the right-hand side, as you're looking at it, it's an overflow of the lunchroom, if, if you will, but, uh, there as well, alternative lunchroom seating, uh, and, um, tables and benches. In addition, the Holmes Plans will, will create a collaborative learning area in their LMC with triangular tables and a variety of seating options. The Holmes staff is consulted with CDW for their design and furniture items, and their invoice, uh, comes to a total of $39,959.71. Um, yeah, there are a couple, a couple dollars left.
Well, they 99% accurate.
There you have the, uh, flexible furniture proposals for, for Frost and Holmes. I requested this item be placed as a voting item on the agenda of the next regular Board of Education meeting. Uh, if you have questions, uh, or, uh, comments, or things you'd like to look me into? Please. I think it looks fantastic. I mean, it looks like they really went out and did their homework, and looked at what their needs were, and, um, it's interesting that each school has such a different, um, choice, or personality, or choice of furniture, and what they want to do with their, um, funding for that. So, um, I think it's fabulous, and I hope they, they get the furniture that they love. My sense is that they had a lot of fun putting this together. For sure, for sure.
Miss, uh, Miss Franklin, you have a question?
I just wondered if you could get some of these sit-stand desks and Xenergy balls for some of the more fidgety and unfocused board members sometimes? That they can stand and sit on these fun balls. They look great.
If you walk around this building, you'll see several offices with different types of seating, and different type of, uh, sit-stand desks, if you will, stand desks, stand-up desks.
A lot of time and energy went into this, deciding what would be the best for the building, and I think it's so great to see them focused on the kids, and what will make the kids even overflow lunchroom. Sometimes that can be the most stressful part of a kid's day, is the lunchroom, especially in middle school. And so, the fact that they have thought about that, and just done different things, is just so great of our staff, and I'm so thankful our staff thinks about what works best for kids.
Anything else? All right. Well, we look forward to, uh, voting on this, then, on the 29th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, that concludes building insight.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. And we take us to, uh, Item Five, our Curriculum Committee, and that is Mrs. Jones. Take it away.
Thank you, President Johnson. We have two items on the Curriculum Committee tonight. The first one is Adult Education Program of Studies, and we will hear from Mr. Willenborg. Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. Uh, you may recall, we began a, a discussion last week regarding an annual requirement of the Board of Education to approve the adult education programs of study. Adult and continuing education programs offer valuable service to our community, and, and positively impact some 275 or more, um, adult learners. It is housed at the CAS Education Center, and is comprised of four programs. I described those a little more in detail last week, but it's, it's the High School Completion Program, uh, High School equivalence, equivalency courses program, if you will, Adult Basic Education Program, and pretty much 90 to 95% of the program is made up of the ESL, the, uh, English as a Second Language, uh, program, some 250 students, uh, adult learners in that program. Uh, it runs in the, generally in the afternoon sessions, some classes on Tuesday and Thursday, some on Mondays and Wednesdays. Um, uh, it is funded through, the program is funded through two sources, state grants and federal grants, uh, and it's a, a break-even, uh, venture, if you will. You know, it covers, um, three part-time staff, three full-time ESL teachers, two part-time counselors, one secretary, and one administrator. Um, I'm, I recommend this item be put on the consent agenda, uh, for the next voting meeting.
Any questions or comments?
Just, uh, it's, it's a wonderful resource for the community, when you think that there are 250 adults in our community that are learning English, because it's not their home, their, their natural, their, their native language, rather. It's, it really is not something that we think of in Livonia typically, but, uh, it's a wonderful resource, and I'm glad that the school district is able to provide it.
Yes.
Ms. Spence?
Um, can you remind us, this is not a requirement of the school district. This is, it, you, as you mentioned, it's a break-even for us, but it is a...
It's a service, a valuable service.
Service to the community.
To the community, yes.
Okay.
You know, the, many employers will, you know, might ask, uh, they, notice that an employee might need some additional math skills. You know, where can get, where can they get that? They can get that through adult education, um, through a $30 registration fee.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Franklin, you have a question? Uh, Mr. Willenborg, would you clarify for us that the residency requirements?
It's an open program, which means, um, adult learners from outside the Livonia Public Schools can attend these classes. Roughly 70%, it's through, I asked this question of Karen Ling, Ms. Ling, our, our program director, and she said, uh, approximately 70% of the students that they service are, reside within the Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you.
The others coming from Novi, Northville, you know, Plymouth, and surrounding areas.
Thank you. No other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Willenborg.
Thank you very much.
Yes. And our next item is the Guided Reading Materials with Mrs. O'Brien.
Good evening. Thank you.
Oh, oh, ooh. Top of stuff.
I told you I would bring them, so that you could see them. I am thrilled to be here this evening, um, to bring a recommendation to purchase Literacy Footprints guided reading materials for our K-4 classrooms. These materials will provide teachers a sequence, leveled text, with a variety of genres to teach guided reading with. It supports teachers with powerful planning that integrates reading, writing, and actually word study activities, which we currently have word study activities that are taught separately, but to be able to teach it in their guided reading lessons at the kid's level is one of the most powerful things that teachers have said that they feel, um, having a program would help them with. Um, we piloted this program along with another, um, guided reading program last year at one of our schools. The same teachers used both sets of materials so that they could compare, and, um, their responses were that the materials were engaging, they supported their ability to target the needed reading skills their students had, and also save them time, because it came lesson-planned, and then linked with, like I said, the word study and the writing component for each leveled text. Um, the materials come with sets of leveled books, 100 titles for kindergarten, 130 for first grade, which makes sense. We have that broad span of beginning readers at first grade, 91 titles at second, 62 at third, and 60 at fourth. It comes with a comprehensive teacher guide, an online assessment resource, uh, video tutorials, and teacher materials. Um, these materials will support our district focus to improve early literacy in the district, and help, um, our priority focus on K through three, um, learning to read by third grade. Uh, we would like to roll out the materials by grade level, so, provide a grade level of the texts, and professional development, and then give them time to work with their coach before we roll out the next grade level. That way, then, each coach in the building can help support the beginning growth with the materials, and then we can move on to the next grade level. Um, so, the total cost for this purchase is $222,328. This includes one set of texts for eight, for two classrooms. We'll have to purchase the additional teacher, um, guide for the second classroom, um, which is a part of the proposal, and then, um, five days of professional development, one for each grade level.
So, to be clear, Ms. O'Brien, when you say there are 110 titles, there are six copies of each title.
Correct.
That would be included.
Correct.
Right? So, that particular grade level.
Correct.
Shared between two classrooms would have an additional 660 books.
Correct.
That are leveled.
So, 110 titles with a set of six for each title, for them to share. And one of the things with a program like this is, there's an order that they would like you to follow, and so, to share beyond two classrooms could get more difficult, because if we have four first grades, we typically have each classroom having several groups of, say, E, F, G, beginning readers, and so, in order for me to go in order, for Mrs. Burton to, Ms. Burton to go in order, we want to make sure we have enough materials that they could do that.
Mrs. Franklin?
And the reason there's only six is because the goal of the program is to divide into small groups, so it's not like we're asking the whole class to share the six.
Correct.
Because the program is designed around.
Right. So, this is small group instruction based on guided reading, yes.
And their levels.
Yep.
Correct.
Mrs. Burton?
And the budget that this, that this is coming out of, I assume this is our curriculum budget, that we have budgeted already for this school year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Not textbook, it's not part of the textbook?
It is part of the...
I'm sorry.
It is part of our, our budgeted textbook for elementary.
We've been able to, um, uh, save some dollars on some of the purchases we made last year, um, so we were able to, um, garner some of those funds and add them to this year's allocation. Um, this is certainly an identified need. Um, I will tell you, I know that Mrs. O'Brien is also trying to secure grant funds as well. So, if, that may have been part of the hesitation, is that we're, we certainly have the funding within the textbook budget.
Yep.
Um, thanks to the, um, the good work of the committees that have come before. Um, so, we have that funding, however, we are hopeful, um, that we may also receive some grant funding for these materials.
And in my proposed three-year budget that we, we talked about, about a year ago, um, I did have budgeted electronic texts for elementary for this year, and what came out last year, really working with coaches, is that they felt like they needed this first. So, it's, it was a need that we've seen, that we want to provide that. So it was a need that we've seen, that we want to provide that for. And like I said, the piloting teachers felt like this was such a nice sequential program to support what they do. We do have bookrooms that have guided reading books. We do use Jan Richardson's guided reading model, which this program follows that same model, but it comes pre-planned, which can save a teacher time. So you're looking at the materials for what my students need, but those identified word study elements, the identified writing topic to do with this, it's pre-planned for you. So a teacher could then look about how they could use these materials to go deeper with the individual kid's needs. So they've done the overall planning for their group, but then they're looking at who needs what, pushes with this piece, or learning how to learn, you know, learning how to sound out this part. So it helps the teacher save some time because it comes pre-planned.
Mrs. Brad?
So when Mrs. Oakwood talks about every student getting tier-one instruction, this small piece would be all teachers will be teaching this for tier-one instruction, but yet they can also differentiate within this, different students, so you can do a deeper look into their...
Correct. That's our group.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to write that down.
And I know we talked about this at the study session a little bit last week, but, and you mentioned all the leveled library stuff that we already have and that we have the capability to convert those leveled library levels into the same levels that we have here, correct? And we're going to still be able to utilize all of those texts in addition to the new?
Yeah, so the leveling system is the same.
Oh, it is?
Yes, so these just come with a sequence of skills that help build a student who is at a level J, what they need in order to read a level L.
Okay.
And we have that in Jan Richardson's book that we use, but teachers are expected to lesson plan that with the books they pull from the bookroom. And this comes already saying, so with the first book in level J, we're going to do this, and then book two, and so on, so yes. But those books are still available, they're still favorite books that teachers will want to also use, but this gives us that structure for every classroom, every student for tier-one.
A teacher may literally need dozens of leveled texts, especially at the lower reading levels for instruction throughout the year. So if you're doing guided reading three or four days a week, and then you're also providing perhaps some tier-two interventions, we will absolutely need the depth of those bookrooms that PTAs have worked so hard to fundraise and to purchase, and schools have used activity accounts. Those will absolutely be a core resource as well.
So if I, so when you show us those cards, those cards are specific to a letter J book? They are not specific to a title?
It is specific to a title, but the title, so let me find the one that goes with crows.
Sorry.
So, no, so this, it's, these are leveled books that have specific skills that are pulled out of this, of course I pulled the title that, okay. So Lemonade for Gilbert is a level F, F, text. So here's the book. So the F is the targeted text. So there's a leveling system that says there's a growth of progression of what vocabulary is in there. This lesson fits this exact book.
Okay.
So I typically, so when we do our guided reading assessment at the beginning of the year, kids come out with a range that they can read independently or instructional. Instructionally is where I would want to pull my group. And structurally means they have about, you know, a percent of the book that they can read fluently, and then words that they struggle with. We want them to struggle a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
What this helps us provide is to take that struggle and give it the skills that struggle has to grow and move to the next level. So it has both of those components, the leveled text plus the lesson for the teacher to draw from.
So the, I'm really sorry.
No.
The additional texts that we have in the leveled library are going to be, they'll be an F.
Correct.
But there may not be a card to go with each of those texts that we already have.
Correct.
So they can use those as extra F-level reading, but they might, we might do Lemonade for Gilbert to learn our skills. And then as we're learning those skills, we'll practice on the other F books that we don't have a card for.
Right, so, and so this lesson plan is based on Jan Richardson's lesson plan?
Yeah.
We've been using her Next Steps to Guided Reading for several years. So there are some teachers who have lesson planned many of the books in their bookroom.
Okay.
When I was at Hays, so teachers would take the blank lesson plan, fill it out for that text. So they chose one of their favorite texts, fill it out. We'd put it in the Ziploc bag with those texts so that then when the next teacher used it, there was one teacher's version of the lesson plan that she created with the book. We don't have that for all of our books, and when you think over the years, you know, we've bought a lot of books. So this provides that consistency in that lesson planning so that if I am teaching second grade at each of our schools, and I have a group that F-text, level F-text fits, then there's this order and sequence that helps grow them. Does that...
Yep.
I'm sorry, yes.
No.
Thank you.
So before, teachers had to create all of those?
But, so, well, so then the lesson plans that are already created, are the coaches going to help go through those and maybe tweak those a little bit to be more consistent with the current cards that we have so that everything's consistent? Or will they still probably use that lesson plan as pretty consistent with the direction that we're going with the cards?
So I think the coaches will start off introducing them and helping them guide through this new program, which follows a very similar lesson plan. I think then teachers going back and looking in their bookrooms, especially when there's texts that they like, especially, then compare that. That's a great professional development thing to do with their coaches, to look at where we were at, look at what we're using now, and see what those comparisons are. But we're going to want teachers to follow the sequence orders of the new program. Not to say that we won't be using those books, but we want to, you know, it's just like getting started with something, we want to make sure we're following this program in its order.
Yeah.
The other piece, we'll use those bookroom books is also for students, for their book boxes, to begin to read independently. So we have all of those books. So as teachers get comfortable with this, they'll be looking at how the lesson plans that they had before, but they'll also be looking at books that they know kids will pull out and put in their books. So I've taught them Lemonade for Gilbert, but they're going to need lots of F books to begin to practice fluency. We want to read and reread these books over and over again so that we become really good at that.
Thank you, I appreciate your patience with those.
President Johnson had a question before.
With regard to, I'm seeing we're getting five days of professional development. Are those full days? And who goes to that development?
So each, my plan is to pull a grade level at a time and give them that day of PD and their materials. Then their coach in their building can help, so starting with second grade. And thinking about, our second graders are our targeted group that next year will be our third graders who are at risk for retention. So starting with them, so if, you know, the board approves the purchase of these materials, and I can set up professional development for November. Second grade teachers would get pulled for a day of PD, they'd go back with their books, their coach would have that time, they'd be setting aside time in their schedules then to work with second grade focusing in on getting them used to the materials, how to, you know, co-teach with them, sit next to them. And then as they start rolling, then we bring in the next grade level and provide them the professional development.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bradford?
Just a quick question, each level has both nonfiction and fiction components, correct?
Correct, yes, Mrs. Bradford.
Just checking. I figured they were, but I'm just curious about that.
Yes, yes, we need a balanced diet of both.
Balanced diet.
We do.
Any other questions or comments?
So I'm requesting to put this on the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you.
President Johnson concludes the report.
Hmm, close.
President Johnson.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's getting late already.
Getting tired.
That's okay.
Well, we'll go to policy committee, and that is Vice President.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good segue.
Thank you. We have a few items on our agenda under policy this evening, and we will start off with board policy, DFKA, crowdsourced fundraising. And we'll hear from Dr. Cario.
Absolutely, good evening. Alice and I are here to present to you DFKA. As presented at our last study session, this new recommended board policy under fiscal management, crowdsourced fundraising, was created to build parameters around this relatively new mode of fundraising. Crowdsourced fundraising is the process of creating, posting, or sponsoring an online fundraiser to seek to secure or generate a specific gift or donation to fund a specific purchaser project, typically through websites such as Donors Choose or GoFundMe or social media designated for this purpose. Issues such as seeking permission, accountability for monies raised, FERPA, and ownership and placement of the items within the district are addressed in the new policy. So Alice and I are interested to hear if you had any recommendations for changes, additions, deletions. And then we would like to request the policy with those changes to be presented at the board meeting for a first reading.
Are there questions or comments on this policy as it's been presented? Mrs. Frank?
I just think it's very timely, thanks so much for looking into it, for setting a policy so our district can be consistent, and our teachers do have a written guideline, so they know what they can do, or our administration has a written guideline. And I just think it's something that's out there, and I think that getting our heads around it so that we have a policy on it is a fantastic thing, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The only thing that I noticed, the first line of paragraph two says, "No employee shall create, post, sponsor, et cetera," without first taking permission. Anyway, without first, and it goes on. I suggest that we might want to add to that, rather than just stopping at "no employee," but rather "no employee, volunteer, or agent of the district," because I noticed that that's the language that's used on the administrative procedures. And just to keep the two consistent, and because our volunteers still need to know that they're held to this also. So I'm just suggesting that paragraph two, line one, begin, "no employee, comma, volunteer, comma, or agent of the district," and then go on. The other question that I had drops down to late in paragraph three of the policy, end of the third line, it says, "If the employee is the recipient of the cash or check, then an itemized record of the received funds with the monies donated must be submitted." Can we or should we designate that the district is the recipient of that money and not the employee? Because it seems like having an employee be the recipient of that money just opens a door for potential misuse that we would rather not have opened. And some of the websites, if the teacher is requesting the fundraising, then it goes to the teacher. Some of those fundraising sites actually would send it to the teacher. That's why we wanted to have specific rules that they would have to submit those funds to either the district-level business office or the school business office for receipt of those funds. And the school then would submit those funds for the purchase of the items that the teacher had requested. So some of those websites do send money in a teacher's name. Can we, then, instead of having it go to an individual employee and their home address, can, if it has to have a person's name and employee's name on it, can we have in our policy that it goes to that employee's name at the address of the school building, and it comes to the school? Again, I'm just trying to avoid any opportunity for misuse of funds.
And it was when we discussed this board policy, we were talking about the recommendation would be to always, when you can, put it into the Livonia Public Schools' name. So if, you know, parents or friends are making out checks, instead of making it out to the employee, make it out to Livonia Public Schools.
Right.
Because you do feel like that would best safeguard the employees too
Absolutely.
from any appearance, you know?
Absolutely.
And so I definitely think, you know, that will be our guidance to the employees, that whenever possible, the check should be made out to, or the funding should be directed directly to the school district. But I think we could definitely work in verbiage about, in the event that it has to be made out to an individual that have it sent, you know, care of Livonia Public Schools or something like that.
I think a lot of these are electronic funds. I think that's the challenge with this, is it's not necessarily a check that they're receiving. And so I think that they, when it's set up, they would not have access necessarily to our accounts. So I believe that's why it's gone into an individual account. I think there are at least one or two of these sites that we've identified that do work that way. And certainly that's, once the principal signs off on approval for this, which is required, it's part of the exhibit.
Right.
They would then be looking for those dollars to come in once that fundraising period has closed. And so the exact area that you noted is intended to have them come back and close that loop on that process, to then submit those monies to either the school business office or the district.
Okay. I guess I'm just not 100% comfortable that these funds are going to go to an individual employee. And like you said, Mrs. Smith, it's not just to protect the district, but it's also to protect the employee against any accusations of skimming off the top or anything along that line. It's just, it's always, there's always a higher risk when it's going to any one individual, be that money from any fundraising for any purpose. Okay, so you're saying then that the...
For instance, something like Donors Choose,
Right.
those dollars don't come directly to the individual. They save the money into an account, and once the threshold is reached, then they work to purchase the equipment through Donors Choose, is that correct? That those dollars don't come directly to, but I believe on sites like GoFundMe, you do have to identify a recipient of those funds. And I believe that that's, that those are normally electronic deposits. But we can look into that a little bit, a little bit more. Certainly, these are sites right now being utilized.
Right.
And that was really why we wanted to try to put down some very clear guidelines, not just in the policy, but in the administrative procedures
Right.
that are very clear, that once you've received approval for this, then there is a process for accounting for those funds that have been raised
Right.
and then making those purchases. But if there's additional information you'd like us to track down, we could certainly do that.
Okay. I guess I don't have, I don't have other suggestive wording beyond that. Because like you said, I recognize that it's not as simple as cut a check and send it to someone's house. I mean, it doesn't always work that way, so.
Right.
Okay. Kind of, maybe a hand?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
On the, and don't, Alison, don't, because I know we need one more checking account. But is there any way, I know that we don't want to start giving out, although we can look at the checks, our checking account information necessarily to these sites, but could we have a district-wide checking account specifically for the funds that come in through these online accounts? So that rather than, as a teacher, me putting my checking account on it, so when the funds are transferred over, there is an available checking account and routing number, which can be given to the principals, to be given out to whoever, however the process works, that then those funds can electronically be transferred into that specific checking account for, and maybe, maybe it would be okay if we had a, you know, not obviously the general checking counter, or if there was one that was already set up that we could utilize to do that, but have a specific checking account and routing number that we could utilize district-wide for those funds to come into, rather than like my personal checking account, if I'm the teacher. You know, rather than having...
Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying. And I'd be happy to follow up with our bank representatives to see what the cost of setting up a new account is. I can say that even if it were to go into, for instance, one of our main accounts, we have protections on our account so that nobody can go in. We have positive pay, it's called, so we upload to the bank. Anytime we cut a check, we upload that up to the bank. So if somebody tries to present a check that's fraudulent, it wouldn't be on the approval list of checks that we've submitted to the bank, and so it'd get denied. Same with, we have ACH debit block on our account too. So if anybody was trying to hack into our account and doing... So if anybody was trying to hack into our account and do an electronic transfer out of the account, that would be blocked too. We have, you know, a specific...
And the checking account numbers are available. Anybody that gets a hard copy check, or gets anything like that, and you can just type in routing numbers. So it's not really a secret. It would just be more of commingling of funds and probably more of an appearance thing than anything else. And so, maybe setting up an additional checking account isn't necessarily the way we need to go, but to have a specific checking account.
And typically what we do too, our accounts receivable person identifies all the incoming payments and then puts it to the applicable fund. And so we do keep separate accounts. For instance, our student activity accounts aren't commingled with our general fund.
Right.
Those are totally kept separate, so we recognize these aren't funds for the district to use. And so I envision this being something similar to, like an activity account, where we're kind of the trust or the holder of the funds, but we recognize that this wasn't money donated to specifically, in general, to Levoni Public Schools, but for a specific purpose.
Yeah, that would take care of the concern.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. Is the Board saying that we should not allow teachers to utilize sites unless we can facilitate that? I just want to be clear before we move forward with the policy, because then I think we would be limiting the sites available. And if that is what the Board is directing, certainly we will include that in the policy. I just want to make, I don't want to be misleading in any way. If we're saying to you we would look into this, not knowing how each individual donor site, because there are so many, and it's a growing fundraising venue, that if, if those get tweaked, because we haven't identified all of them, what we've said is...
And there will be a new one tomorrow.
And so I just want to be clear from the Board. If, if your direction is, it can only, these can only be utilized for crowdsourced funding if the funds come directly into the district, then we would want to probably do some additional due diligence on just those specific sites, in which case we would disallow what we do now in collecting some of those funds through fundraising. So we were trying to put parameters on some of what exists, and also for this growing medium. And, but I, again, don't want to be misleading to say, we'll look into this and then have some sites that are still utilizing individual accounts. So I would open that back up to the Board.
Mrs. Frank?
Two things. My preference would be possibly to say it's, and just add a statement of, like, the preference of the district is that it does this way. But there are some that don't allow it. I think that would be a nice option, you know, that just says, "When possible, please do it this way." And I don't care how you handle the funds that way. But I think the other thing, could it possibly be, and again, this is administrative procedure, but another safeguard, could it be to have the principal close the loop then on this, on this sheet? That when the money comes to your office, Allison, that you're not looking back, but that the teacher actually has to, when they present the check, or however they do it, the receipt, that they actually, because there's always an owner's view on the website. Like, "I made this much money, it came from..." Like, it always says, so that could be another way that the principal could look at the amount of money that it says on the website that they made, and that this is where, this is the money that they're giving to me, or giving to, this is what they bought with it, or whatever. That there's an additional step there that just closes the loop, so that we're not wondering if it was, where it was, if you will. So I think if there's just another step on there, so it's not just approval and go, but maybe a close, close of the loop.
Receipt?
Yeah. Because it should print out, every, every site should be able to print out what you heard.
Does the last bullet in the administrative procedure, does that answer your question?
I just think, something on the bottom of this form that they're filling out.
Okay.
That just says, I don't know, I don't know what you think about.
Yeah.
But just something on the bottom of here that says the principal has looked at the, like, double-checked, you know?
Received. The funds are good. The funds who got... The funds or goods have been received.
And reviewed, like, basically, you know, that they reviewed them with the printout from wherever, with the receipt from the, from the funding.
I'll take you guys, I saw all the hands.
Mrs. Bradford?
I'm sorry, I'm going back to, just reiterate what Mrs. Burton said. Are more than, like, not just an employee might, might be using these sites. Now we're talking PTAs and different groups that might be doing these. So I just want to reiterate, make sure that we involve all people on this. This is going to have to be something for, not just employees, but every, anybody that is going to go ahead and use.
If they're going to use our name, absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just had to reiterate.
Yes. If, yeah, if they're using the LPS name, then it's got to go through LPS. Mr. Centers, thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, I do think, kind of along the lines of what Mrs. Frank would say, that this is not money in a paper bag. There's clearly a record of who donated, how much has gone there. And, you know, the principal's already expected this money to come in. It's clear that what came in and what's expected to be turned in. I think it's, you know, sure, there's always a case where someone could be dishonest. We trust people with our equipment and all sorts of things. So, you know, there's a certain level of trust with our employees, and I think this is quite verifiable. So, you know, we can't always expect everyone to be honest all the time, but it's clear that, in my opinion, that, you know, if someone's collecting money, what they'll need to contribute to the district is, will be obvious.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Couple of things. Firstly, I think that it would be critical that whatever policy we end up with, a hard copy should be delivered to every PTA unit, every booster group, every team, a hard copy. Don't expect them to come looking for it. We need to say, "This is our new policy," and make sure that they actually have a physical copy of it to include within their own books. And the other thought is that before anybody decides to do any kind of crowdsourced fundraising, they should first talk to their principal or the superintendent, and make sure it's not something that's already in the plans. So, for example, if a school wanted flexible furniture, they may not know that they were next in line to get some.
Right.
That's a very good...
And that's, I believe that that's addressed right. It's either in the policy or the administrative procedure for that very purpose.
Yes.
Yep. Uh, Mrs. Bonfield?
And I apologize if I missed it, but in, on the form, is there a place, or can we add a place on the form that says, "Expected method of receipt"? And then, so then, and I don't know if you put personal, check marks, just so it's not confusing, but, you know, personal checking account, or, you know, district checking account, however, you know, the one where the funds aren't received, that then they buy the equipment and send it in, and just a brief section so that when all these get stacked up, if it starts, that, you know, it's really easy for someone to look at the form and say, you know, so that, because sometimes the stuff is delayed. So if you assume that it's coming through the district website, but it's really going, or through the district checking account, it's really going through somebody else's personal checking account, then, you know, you're going to be looking for, the principal's going to be looking for it, and there's a time lag in there, and then, then that time lag has a tendency to turn into not being able to take action if there's an issue. But if there's an expected, so that when they get down, they can see, "Oh, that was supposed to go through Tammy's checking account, and she hasn't turned herself in." Or, and then she, the principal can come and ask me. But if it says it's checked off, it says going through a district checking account, then I know as a principal that I need to call Mrs. Smith and say, "Hey, Mrs. Smith, did this come through yet?" And sort of eliminate the question about where and how the funds are coming, and limit the number of questions that have to be asked.
Any other questions? Good, all, all good suggestions, and thank you, folks, as we explore this new arena. Any other questions or comments, suggestions? The only other thing that I noticed on the administrative procedure for this very same DFKA, the first bullet point, near the end of the first line, it says, "Before any donation is requested, the building administrator slash director must be informed of the request." I would like to suggest be informed and give approval, because the words "approval" appear in other sections of this. And it's not just telling the administrator what you're going to do, but they have to obtain the administrator's approval before they go do this. So it would read, "Before any donation is requested, the building administrator slash director must be informed and give approval of the request to ensure that the request does not conflict with other fundraising, et cetera." And then it addresses Mrs. Jarvis's duplication of effort and so forth. Is everyone all right with that? Any other suggestions, comments, issues? Mrs. Jarvis?
Just a comment. I know that we've mentioned that other groups might be involved in this. I know best practices for PTA, it would not go to an individual. It could not go through their bank account. So there might be times when a teacher might say, "Oh, the PTA can do this," but it's not necessarily the case.
Thank you. Any other suggestions or comments? Thank you very much for adjusting all of our various thoughts on this. The next policy that we are going to address is Board Policy, GAEA, Discrimatory Harassment of Employees or Applicants for Employment. Mr. Archibald?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
If I can, I'll just direct you to your packet. We reviewed these last week at the study session. And again, just covering them quickly for you. In the second paragraph, the majority of those changes are simply clarifying the order in whom to report any such discrimination, making that just a little bit more clear. Also in that second paragraph, the last sentence adds the responsibility of an administrator to report discriminatory harassment, so whether it comes from the victim themselves, or if an administrator is aware of such conduct, then they are responsible by this policy to report it as well. And those are the only changes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, comments, concerns, suggestions?
First reading.
Yes, we'll put it on for first reading next week.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Our last one?
Um, no, I'm going to step back one to the one with Mrs. Terrell and Mrs. Smith. On my notes, to Mrs. Wozniak, may I add in, if it's ready? I don't want to put them under a lot of pressure. This is new, and so...
You're saying, put it on for first reading at our next meeting, if it is ready for it. And if not, then we, at this next subsequent meeting, when it is ready.
And this is what I included in my notes for her as well.
Okay, we're, we're okay with that if it does not come for first reading.
Absolutely. If it's not ready in two weeks, we'll, we'll take it when it's ready.
Because we gave them a lot of, a lot of stuff.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go on.
Okay. And back to Mr. Archibald.
Have you seen the two of them work? I don't think that's going to be...
You have to be ready in two weeks. You're going to get knocked out.
I don't think we're going to mess with your policy, though. I think you're going to be okay.
I took the low-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
The next policy is Policy GAF.
Yes.
Again, the Personnel Section, Workplace Violence.
Yes.
Minor changes here, just simple clarification. There's a series of bullets, if you go down to the fourth bullet. Simply replacing the word telephone with the word phone. And then in the last paragraph on the first page, in the following, I guess all that paragraph is replacing the word principal with the word administrator, that some of our buildings have more than a principal there to report to. And then also correcting the title from Supervisor of Public Safety to the Administrator of Public Safety. Again, all just cleaning it up. No other changes.
Any suggestions or comments on that? All set, we'll put that on our next, on the agenda for next meeting for first reading. Go ahead.
Board Policy, GAMA. Mrs. Burton, if you'd like, do you want me just to update the rest of the Board?
Please do.
What our conversation from earlier. If you recall, when we brought this forward at the study session, there was a question. And if you flip over the second page, when we got to the, the top bullet there on the second page where it reads, "Employees," and I'm partway through that bullet, "Employees may not bring alcohol or unlawful drugs into the school buildings or onto work sites at any time, or use, consume alcohol or unlawful drugs while on school property during their work hours." We had discussion regarding the outcome of the November election with respect to personal use of marijuana and how that would be impacted, or how that would impact this policy. We talked with Gari Satchtel from Keller Toma. She indicated that regardless of the outcome of the election, we would be covered in that marijuana use or possession is still illegal under federal law. However, to be clear, if it were to pass, we could amend this policy to include, to list marijuana like we do alcohol. Again, that way it takes out any ambiguity or uncertainty, or provides clarification. So in conversation with Superintendent Okus and Mrs. Burton, our recommendation would be to hold on any changes to this until after the election, and then change it accordingly.
Yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
I think that the language that will go on the ballot specifies that even if it does pass, that marijuana is legalized in the state, that it would not be allowed on K-12 property.
That, I'm not even going to go into all of it, because I'm not versed enough to speak to it, but regardless, I think it would, regardless of the outcome, if it, if it does pass, it would behoove this Board to take a look at our policy in its entirety, in combination with whatever stipulations do pass on that. So I'm not disputing for a moment what you're saying, but I'm just, I'm not enough of an expert on it, and I just think that if it passes, we need to take an A to Z look at this thing. All right. Mrs. Frank?
So did you say, hold off on making any changes and talk about...
Correct. We'll go forward with the other changes we talked about in study session, but with specific to marijuana, we'll wait till we see...
So we would not bring this for first reading?
Correct.
Not until November.
We will basically just, instead of putting this on the agenda for October 29th, we'll put it on, why don't we put it on the next committee meeting agenda? Because by then, we will know if we're going to go forward with it. It will be the November committee meeting?
Yes.
Mrs. Okus, is that all right with you? Okay. And at that point, we will address it, make any changes if need be, or agree if we should go on if it does not pass?
So November 5th is the study session, November 12th is the committee, the whole meeting.
Okay. So it'll be on the agenda for further discussion on November 12th? Does that work, Mr. Archibald?
It works great.
Okay, terrific. And on to Board Policy, GAC.
And with this one, if you would, flip a page and turn to the administrative procedure, which was once GAEA. If you remember from our discussion last week, this administrative procedure, all the changes that are here are simple corrections or clarifications, updating the information. It's an update to what existed, with the exception of the statement, "Any injury involving an employee's head, neck, or back must seek medical attention." Again, that is simply reflecting our current practice. If you recall from our discussion, we realized that this was with the policy with respect to discriminatory harassment, which didn't seem to make sense. And so from our discussion there, we wanted to come up with a short policy related to staff protection, and then put this administrative procedure under that. So we would change this administrative procedure from GAEA to GAC. And again, is, like other administrative procedures, that doesn't require any, any action, but just to let you know where that went. And then if you flip back, you'll see what will be a new policy, GAC, under the Personnel Section, Staff, Job Related Accident and Injury. And is there, I don't think you need me to read it.
Any questions or comments on this?
I'd just like to suggest, under administrative procedures, and I should have caught this earlier, the blue line, "Any injury involving an employee's head, neck, or back must seek immediate medical attention." So that refers back to the injury. So I think it should say, "Any injury involving an employee's head, neck, or back requires immediate medical attention." Because an injury can't do the seeking. And I know we mean the employee.
Okay.
Thank you.
But the way that it's worded, let's replace "must seek" with "requires."
And we'll first read that at 10:29?
First, we will first read Board Policy, GAC, and we don't need to vote on or approve administrative procedures, they can just stand for our information.
Right, but the new policy...
The policy, yes. New Policy, GAC, yes, first reading of October 29th.
Got it.
President Johnson, that concludes Policy.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald.
Thanks, Steve. That will take us to Item 7, Personnel Committee. Mrs. Frank?
I don't think we have any updates today. We do not.
Then we'll go to Item 8, Legislative. Mrs. Bradford?
I do not believe we have any updates. Do we? Thank you.
Very good. Therefore, we are at the end of the agenda, so our meeting is concluded. Thank you.